I hear you.
You get that one there?
No.
Me now.
Yes.
Yes, okay, great. Thank you. Thank you for your patience there.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Delise.
The Alice.
Oh, sorry, the Alice.
No problem.
Won't make that mistake again.
No problem. You're not the first one and you won't be the last one.
Did you want, did you want me to get started or do you have more agenda to go over?
Just want to say-
You're the first item on the agenda. You're right to the agenda.
All right, so here we go.
Go ahead.
How are you, everybody? Thanks for inviting me to be here today and talk about Local Law 152, periodic inspection of gas piping systems. I'm going to share a short presentation with you. And then if there's enough time afterwards and you'd like to ask some questions, that'd be fine. And I'm going to stay on for the duration of your meeting because everything on the agenda looks great and I'm looking forward to, to be part of it. So I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. All right, can you see the presentation?
Yes.
All right, great. So welcome Brooklyn Community Board One navigating New York City Local Law 152, periodic inspection of gas piping systems presented by myself today. So this is very informative and I want to make sure that you get out of it as much as possible. So at the end of this presentation, you will know why there is a Local Law 152, if your particular building type needs an inspection, if a building without gas needs to be inspected, how to determine which year your inspection is required, can do an inspection, and what is and what is not inspected, the possible outcomes of an inspection. Now, before we get started, there's a couple of important things I'd like you to know. All information in this presentation is considered accurate as of October 2020. All information in this presentation is subject to change and should be verified at any future date in which it would be relied on. And I am not an attorney, so this information is not legal advice. And for legal advice, all users are directed to review the information with their legal counsel. All right, why is there a Local Law 152? All of you remember the East Harlem gas explosion, the East Village gas explosion in 2014 and 15. Unfortunately, there were deaths, there were injuries, and a lot of people lost their homes. So in April, in, in early 2016, the city council introduced what would eventually become Local Law 152. So it was introduced in February, then it was passed in November, and the mayor signed it into law in December of 2016. Now, who enforces Local Law 152? It is enforced by the Department of Buildings Plumbing Enforcement. They approved the final rules in 2019. Over three years after it was originally put into law, an enforcement began January 1st, 2020. A building owner that does not file an inspection certification before the due date of their particular year in which it is to be inspected may be subject to a penalty. And owners are required to keep all the paperwork they receive as part of the inspection for 10 years and make it available to the Department of Buildings upon request. Now, what is Local Law requiring? It's requiring the inspection of all buildings except those that are in occupancy group R3. Now, a lot of people confuse zoning and tax class with occupancy group. Occupancy group is not something that's as easy to find when you're on the internet exploring the Department of Buildings. But if you go to your building record and you click on Certificate of Occupancy and look on the Certificate of Occupancy pages, you'll see if you're in occupancy group R3. But another way to do it easily is to just say if you have a one-family or a two-family dwelling, you are in occupancy group R3. And if you have anything that is a one-plus unit mixed-use building or a three-plus unit residential building and all the other buildings, then you are required to have the Local Law 152 inspection. And what a lot of people don't realize is that whether you have gas in the building or you do not have gas in the building. Now, inspections are required in 2020, 2021, 2022, and 2024. And they're based on the community district you're in. And the reason we're here today talking with you is because Brooklyn Community Board One, Community District One, is in the 2020 portion of this cycle. It's actually Community Districts 1, 3, and 10 in each borough that are required for 2020. And, and in 1, 3, and 10 in all five boroughs, the inspection is due to be done by 12/31/2020. Now, obviously, when the Department of Buildings put this into, into a place where they would be enforcing it on January 1st, 2020, it was a good three months before everything was going to change. And so a lot of people, number one, don't know about it, and number two, they've been delayed in taking care of it. I have made inquiries and I know others that are stakeholders have made inquiries with the Department of Buildings to see if they plan to extend it. And up to this point, there has been no indication that they plan to extend the requirement for 2020 into a future date. Now, with that said, based on everything that we've been experiencing over the last six months, we've seen deadlines change. So I would never ever say to you, bank on it, but it's always a possibility. So just keep that in mind. And also, because you have, you have political power in your community board, one of the things that I think you should do is you should go to your elected officials and you should say to them, you really got to put for this to be extended into 2021. And there could be a whole lot of different ways that that could be done. They could just move all the years one year forward. They could say anyone in 2020 has until the middle of 2021. There's a lot of different ways that that could be done. So I actually recommend that you, as stakeholders, do something to maybe get it extended into another year. All right, so who's involved? You, the owners, property managers, and the authorized representatives of people that are helping people facilitate compliance with this law. Now, the inspectors are either a licensed master plumber, aka LMP, with a gas certification from either National Grid or ConEd, and they can inspect buildings with gas piping. Also, some of their employees who have specific qualifications in terms of time and coursework, they can also do the inspections. Now, the non-gas inspections can only be done by a professional engineer or a registered architect. And again, enforcement is the New York City Department of Buildings. Now, what's inspected in buildings without gas? Well, the inspector, the engineer, or the registered architect will make a call to the utility and make sure there's no gas service there. They'll go to the site and they'll look around the street, and then they'll go into any areas that would necessarily usually have gas piping, and they'll just make sure there's no gas piping. And then all they do is fill out this one form called GPS2 that certifies that there's no gas piping in the building, and then it gets filed with the Department of Buildings, and we'll talk about how that's done later. And, and then at that point, you don't have to worry about it beyond that until the four years go by. Because just like Local Law 11, the facade law, this recycles every certain amount of years, and in this particular case, it's four years. So here's a little flow chart of what happens with buildings without gas. And you'll see that what I have up here is actually the community districts and the different years that they're due. So all of you here, I'm assuming you're in Community Board One, so unfortunately, you're not 20, 21, 22, or 23. You're in 2020. So what you do, you schedule an inspection with your professional engineer or your architect, or with Keep My Gas, we can help you with that. And, and then they would go and they would complete the inspection, confirm that you don't have gas, they take care of that filing with the GPS2, provide you with a copy of it, and we'll see you in four years. But what happens if they go there and you didn't even know, and you have gas, and the gas is live? Then you would have to go to the next step, which is schedule an inspection with a licensed master plumber to get a gas piping inspection. Now, what happens in buildings with gas? What's inspected is everything from the point of entry of the gas service, all the indoor meters and manifolds, all exposed gas piping in the basement, laundry area, boiler room, and regulator room, all exposed gas piping in any other public spaces, and I'm going to clarify that a little bit more in a minute, all hallways, lobbies, and corridors, but private tenant spaces are not inspected. Which means that if you have a residential mixed-use building, for instance, and on the first floor, you have some stores, and then on the second, third, and fourth floor, you have residential apartments, the licensed master plumber is not going to go in the stores, and the licensed master plumber is not going to go into the apartments. But the licensed master plumber is going to go in through the front door and either take an elevator up or walk up the stairs and walk through the hallways with what's called a portable combustible gas detector. And the one that's used is the LMP 200. We'll talk more about that later. So it's, again, it's done in two phases, one with the portable gas detector, and then one is a visual inspection. So this is an example of some of the things that are done with the gas detector. So this is my brother, unfortunately couldn't be with us tonight, but that's okay. He's busy doing things like this. And he walks in the front door, he walks around with the gas detector, which you see is handheld right here in his hand. He's got a little wand, and that thing's sniffing to see if there's any gas in the hallways. Then he's going and he's checking the meter manifold and all the meters, and then all the horizontal and vertical piping. If there's a laundry room, he's also going in and he's checking the laundry room. And in this case, he was in the regulator room. And he does that anywhere that there's exposed gas piping except private tenant spaces. Now, let's say, for instance, you have a commercial tenant, and that commercial tenant uses some of the basement, and the point of entry is in that commercial tenant's portion of the basement. That would be an, that would be an exception to the rule of not going into a private tenant space, because obviously, we got to get to the point of entry and be able to see all the meters and the manifold. This is an, so what, what is, what is the, what is the licensed master plumber looking for? Well, with the gas detectors, looking for a gas leak. So if there's any gas leak, then that detector is going to go off, and we're going to know that there's a gas leak somewhere. Now, what happens if there's a gas leak? If there's any gas leak, the licensed master plumber must call the utility. And I'm going to clarify that a little bit more later on. The other part of the inspection is a visual inspection. And the visual inspection is looking for different things that are non-code compliant, illegal connections, and evidence of excessive pipe corrosion. So what we did is we took some pictures so you could see some examples. So this is a cap T, and it's between the incoming gas service and all the meters. And that really shouldn't be there, because if it's there, somebody could actually tap off of it, and, and that would, that would be an illegal connection. So something like that would have to be fixed. And I'm going to talk about when it would have to be fixed, not right away, so don't worry about it too much. These are what they call non-code unions. That's kind of a similar situation to the cap T. All right, a lot of people have laundry rooms installed. You're supposed to have hard black pipe. This is flex pipe, so that's non-code compliant. But let's say, for instance, you installed that 30 years ago, and you filed properly with the Department of Buildings to install it 30 years ago. Well, it was code compliant then. So the Department of Buildings said that anything was properly filed and was code compliant at the time that it was installed is still considered code compliant. In otherwise, it is grandfathered. And then the last thing that I want to show you is stage four corrosion. Now, in this particular case, this is considered an imminently dangerous situation. So the licensed master plumber would call the utility, and the utility would come down and take a look at it. They'd make an assessment and determine what next steps would be. In this particular case, this pipe happened to be between the valve and the point of entry from the street and belonged to ConEd. So ConEd arranged everything, only had the gas shut off for a day, and put in a brand-new pipe, and it didn't cost the owner a penny. Now, that pipe was so corroded that if someone had touched it, it just would have, it would have collapsed. And then there would have been a lot of gas in the basement, and if there was a spark, that could have been a disaster. So it was really good that they had this done at the time that they had it done. All right, so these are all the things that can happen if you had a, a gas inspection, gas piping system inspection. So again, I have the years here. We went over that before. If you need it done in 2020, which everybody in Community Board One in Brooklyn does, you're going to schedule the inspection with your licensed master plumber, and these are the three things that can happen. The first thing that happens is we go there, or the licensed master plumber goes there. Everything is fine, no problem. There were two forms to fill out. We fill them out for you. One's a GPS1, which says there's no problems. One's a GPS2, which says there's no problems. The GPS2 gets filed with the Department of Buildings, and we provide you with a hard copy and a scan of the GPS1 and the GPS2, and you got to hold on to it for 10 years. See you in four years. The second thing that can happen is maybe you have that cap T, or you have that non-code union, or you have flex pipe that shouldn't be there because the installation of the laundry room was never filed. Not a big deal. We're just going to put on that GPS1 report that we give to you that those things need to be corrected, and you have 180 days to correct it. And when you get it corrected, either by the licensed master plumber that did the inspection or some other licensed master plumber, that licensed master plumber then will file a new, a new GPS2 with the Department of Buildings to say that the conditions have, have been corrected. So it's pretty much the same process as the first scenario, as the second scenario. The only difference is, is that you have some repairs to make in the next 180 days. Now, the third scenario, and the one that everyone hopes that we don't have, and we understand your concern with that, is that the inspection reveals a leak or an imminently dangerous condition. At that point, based on protocol, the licensed master plumber is required to notify the utility. Now, this would be protocol whether it was a Local Law 152 inspection or not. Then the utility comes down immediately. The local master plumber, the licensed master plumber should wait for the utility come. The utility comes and they assess the situation and they take appropriate action. We had a situation where there was a gas leak in the meter manifold, called the utility. The utility came down. They tightened the nut. There was no more gas leak. That was the end of it. So it, it, it could be more serious than that, but it can also be as simple as that. Now, at this time, I'd like to say if anybody has any questions, and if we have time for questions, I'd be certainly happy to answer them for you.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? I can't see faces.
Yes, I do. Chairman, Chairperson Paul.
Yes, can you, can you take the presentation down, please?
Yes.
Yes, Steve.
Thank you. You have basically two questions. Why? Does it seem like this, this new law is temporary? You know, what's to prevent somebody in our community district in 2021 or 22 creating an illegal hookup? And, and then number two is, how, how does this law, and just in general terms, what you presented, prevent illegal hookup that happened to East Village that caused the deadly explosion?
Well, you know, that's a really, really good question, right? And I'm going to tell you that I don't have a definitive answer to that question. But if you read the law, which is not very long, you say to yourself, maybe, maybe this should have a little more in it than it does so that it would produce something like that gas explosion in the East Village. Because remember, when I said to you, you're not supposed to go into the tenant-private spaces. Now, apparently, that illegal connection was in the basement of, of what was being utilized as part of the, the lease for the restaurant. If, 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 if we went there to do an inspection today and it was the same exact scenario, technically, we would go down there because there's exposed gas piping that belongs to the building, and we might have seen it, but we also might not have seen it. And, and then that explosion would not have been, would not have been, what's the word I'm looking for? Prevented, even though there was a, there was a, you know, quote-unquote, Local Law 152 inspection. So that's a very good question. And I got to tell you, there's a lot of uncertainty around this. And, you know, we're learning every day. And we come up with new, like, we came up with a situation this week where there's two buildings on one lot. One building has gas in it, and the other building doesn't have gas in it. And so the question was, well, do you need two inspections here? Because each building has its own BIN number, and you put the BIN number on the GPS and GPS2, so you're not just going to do one inspection there. You're going to have to do two. And we queried the Department of Buildings, and they said, yes, you're going to have to do two inspections. One is going to have to be an inspection with a registered architect or professional engineer to do the non-gas piping building. And the other one is going to have to be with a licensed master plumber to do the gas piping system inspection. And I'm sorry, what was your name that asked the question? Because I didn't see it.
Stephen Chesley.
Steve, yeah, how you doing, Steve? So Steve, I'm sorry I didn't definitively answer your question, but I think it's something that should be brought up, you know, with your community board members and also with your city council people. Because they're the ones that, they're the ones that wrote and approved the, and passed the law.
Yeah, no, thank you. And also, just like, my first question was, you know, why is, it seems like the law is just temporary? You know, what happens in our district after, you know, this year? What's, you know, what's, you know, stop malfeasance from happening in terms of bad hookups after this? You know, why not make a permanent, a permanent four-year cycle?
Yeah, so, so, so it is a permanent four-year cycle. So anybody who gets inspected in 2020 will have to be inspected again in 2024. So if they did something between 2020 and 2024, it would be detected in 2024. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, Steve. Are there any other questions? You can write your questions in.
Yes, I have a brief question, if possible.
Sure, sure.
Oh, I am Santhi Mishali. I, not just, you mentioned about exposed pipe. They mentioned it's about exposed pipe.
Say that again, say that again.
You were, you know, we were talking about visible pipes, right?
Yes, 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 it's only, yes, it's only visible pipes.
So, but what about, I live in a historic district, and generally, in many historic districts, there are situations where, you know, this may, may be a situation where it may be dangerous anyway, and it's not about visibility. I believe what is visible most likely affects some major violations that are happening, you know, like the East Village event, you know, is visible. But there are especially historic districts, condition where there are gas pipe, that were originally serving the ceiling as a, as a light source, and they are still have gas, you know, and, you know, and there's still this rust gunning through this pipe. But definitely, there is no visibility. Many of the owners sometime may not even, they're not even aware about that. So my question is that, you know, and, and also, I've been collecting a little bit voice of some of our neighbors, you know, in our block. And many have received letter from plumbers, from different neighbor from the Bronx, which definitely is an opportunity also for many licensed plumber to, you know, to do, generate a substantial, you know, amount of business and revenue. So there is concern also by resident owners of, you know, small homes, you know, that, you know, what, you know, this doesn't open really the door for people trying to get advantage and do extra work or claiming there is more work needs to be done. Yeah, so those are my question about.
Yeah, so that, it's important that, actually, could you just speak up? Okay, great. So, so with that said, you know, there are probably between 1,200 and 1,500 licensed master plumbers in the city of New York. And there's about 300,000 to 400,000 buildings over the next four years that are going to have to be inspected. That includes non-gas piping inspections as well. And so that, so registered architects and professional engineers would also be doing those inspections. So yes, there, there is an opportunity for licensed master plumbers and also architects and engineers to, to, to create business from this. And it's important that you do your due diligence and that you ask questions and that you make sure that the person that you're dealing with, you can, you can look up everyone's license on, on the Department of Buildings website, and you can find out if a person has any kind of violations or complaints. If, you can, you, you can ask them about their insurance and make sure that they give you a certificate of insurance that has you as additionally insured to make sure that the proper insurance is in place. For instance, these inspections are being done, and anyone that does inspections, like an engineer or an architect, has professional liability or what they call E and O, Errors and Emissions Insurance. Not every construction contractor has errors and emissions insurance, because it's really not needed. But if you're going to start doing inspections, then you should have it. So that's one of the questions that you want to ask. And the, and the first question that you asked, I wasn't sure if I really understood it completely, but I'm going to give it a shot, okay? The, and I don't know if that answered the second question adequately. Did that answer the second question adequately? That you just, you know, you got to do your due diligence and make sure that you're picking the right person to do this. And you got to, and you got to, and you got to shop. You got to shop and make sure that, you know, you're not being charged too much. And you also don't want to be charged too little either. You want to make sure, you know, the best price and the highest price aren't necessarily the best choice. So you got to make sure that-
You got to make sure that you're doing your due diligence.
No, I, you know, and that's, that's fair. You explained very clearly. Now, my question was the impartiality of the person that is actually going to perform an inspection, but is also has interest in performing the actual labor, and, and he can describe there is maybe additional work needs to be done, may not necessary be necessary, you know, but, and everybody knows how expensive are plumbers, you know, so that's a major concern, especially at this times, you know, and they definitely make more money than doctors, more money than architects, you know, when it comes to their bills. You know, so these are concern that many people have, and they make them a little bit less, you know, open to really say, oh, am I going to call a plumber? Is this going to be so impartial? Because this same guy has to do the inspection, but also is going to perform a work which is going to build, you know, the, the client. So that, this was my question.
All right, so, so, yeah. And I, and I don't want to take up too much time, so I think maybe we'll make that the last question. I don't know. But, but I'm still happy to answer more questions. So in answer to that question, it's, it's extremely difficult to be a licensed master plumber in the city of New York. You, you really have to know what you're doing. And, and you have to take all sorts of continuing education. And again, I'm not the, I'm not the plumber. My brother is the plumber. But I know, because I've watched him do it over the decades. And in every business, you're going to have people that are not going to be impartial. And they're going to look, maybe look at this as an opportunity to get more work. But, you know, I, I, I think we have to have, especially during this time, I think we have to trust that the people that we're dealing with have our best interests in mind. And you still have to do your due diligence. You still have to make sure you're dealing with somebody that you know is reputable. But at that point, I, I, you know, I think you can rely on the fact that someone's going to go in, do the proper inspection, not find things that shouldn't be found and, you know, to, to create extra work for them. And, and, you know, we've done a lot of buildings, and most of them frankly have been fine. There hasn't been any problems. So, and when I say we, I mean, my brother has done a lot of buildings because he's the plumber.
Okay, okay, okay. We have, we have another question. Chair Nevis?
My, my main concern is, in the event that there is an issue, are there any resources? Can you hear me?
I can.
Okay. Are there any resources for seniors? So you said if there is, you know, an issue that comes up, you only have 180 days to come and fix. And plumbers and architects, they're very expenses, expensive, as you know. And there are some seniors that own small buildings that are struggling. So are there any resources available in the event?
None, none that I know of, but that's a really good question, and I think that's something that I'm going to investigate because that, if there is something like that, that's definitely something that I would want to make known. Oh, you know, another question I did ask at the Department of Buildings was, if someone had in 180 days to do something, and they filed the permits and everything else, and time is going by and 180 days lapsed, you know, would they be able to get an, an extension? And the answer was, they have 180 days. Now, that, that doesn't, I don't think that means that they're not going to get an extension. I think that means that, that the Department of Buildings has to be careful what they say they are and aren't going to do. So I would think that at the point, you would apply for an extension. There's lots of times that people apply for extensions when they're doing construction work. And I'm sure it would be assessed and they would determine whether or not they're going to extend it. As far as financial resources? As far as financial resources, that would be something that we would have to do more investigation on. Absolutely.
Thank, okay. Thank you so much for your presentation. It was really informative. Thank you so much. Be well, be healthy, be safe.
Yes, and thank you Brooklyn Board, Brooklyn Community Board One and everybody. And Jerry and Marie who helped me before to get this all set up. And, 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 and we're going to try it again and I hope I get it right. Dealese.
De Alice.
De Alice, okay. Okay, thank you. I'm going to stay around if you don't mind. I like to watch the meeting.
No problem, you just have to move on.
All right.
The next item on the agenda is New York City Department of Planning Domino Refinery.
De Alice, I just want to tell you I'm here, I think by email, so Tom was gracious to.
Pardon me?
I just, I was, I was on, I wasn't able to speak up when the attendance was taken. I dialed on at six, I just wanted to let you know that I'm on.
Yeah, we know you're here, we know you're here. Thank you, Toby. City Planning.
Hi Chair Fuller, this is Dave Lombino at Two Trees Management.
Hi Dave, how are you?
Good, thanks for your time this evening. I'm going to keep this brief. Do I have the ability to share a document on the screen?
Yes.
Here we go, thank you. It's everyone. I'm going to keep this brief and then happy to answer any questions. Two Trees is seeking a minor modification of the previously approved special permit concerning a redevelopment of the Domino Sugar Refinery. Specifically, the Landmark Refinery Building, the centerpiece of the site is in, is now under, we're in the painstaking process now restoring it and remaking it into a commercial office building. The Department of City Planning, out of an abundance of caution, asked that we present today the minor changes that were already approved by this board in 2017 in connection with our revised Landmarks Preservation Commission approval. So you can see on the left, this was the design that was approved, approved in, in 2014. It had a stepped roof design. In 2017, we came before this board and the, and the L P C to approve the, the image on the right, which has a domed roof. So this design change, which is in shape only, moved from the step design on the right to the dome design on the left. And, and also created some more public accessibility on the ground floor level. It was approved by the Landmarks Committee of this, of this, of this board and then eventually by the Landmarks Preservation Commission. So what we're showing today remains, so what, what we're seeking now is a change to the special permit that would allow this building to be built as shown on the right. So it's merely a technical review of this, the design change, which was kind of already reviewed by this board and L P C. So what we're showing here on the right is within the approved zoning envelope that was approved by this board and the city council in 2014. There's no change to the approval in terms of height, bulk or use relative to what was approved in 14. In fact, what we're building now is actually slightly less dense than what was approved for the refinery. Today, this application seeks to change our special permit to enable the construction of this building. And, and that's what we're seeking today is for your comments and recommendations regarding this change from left to right in terms of our, in terms of our special permit. We already, it was already approved in terms of our L P C approval. And now we're seeking your recommendations and comments with regards to our special permit. That's all.
Thank you, David. Are there any questions?
I, I have a question. Dell, Dell Teague.
Hi Dell.
Hi, hi Dave. So Dave, are you, let me just make sure I'm clear. Are you saying that you're asking us to approve the special permit so that you can build it exactly as the Landmarks Committee approved?
That's right.
So it's no change from what, what we approved as, as, as the Landmarks application?
There's no change to the design whatsoever. This will enable us to build what was approved by L P C.
And, and I think that was also brought before the, the land use and Landmarks Committee of the board, wasn't it?
That's right.
And we approved it.
In 2017, yeah.
Okay.
If you've seen the site, you know, we're, it's now under construction, we're in the process of, of restoration. And, and this will enable us eventually, when we're done with the restoration, to begin the, the construction of the actual building inside the restoration.
So you said a two step. Thank you, Dell.
Thank you.
Who's, who's trying to speak? I don't see your hand up.
It's Trina.
Trina. David, can you remove your presentation, please?
Sure.
Thank you. Trina and then Steve.
Dave, why is it a two step process? We put landmarks approves, I've never seen it before. Where in a project that's come through landmarks, there's been an approval and then the special, it's a special. It comes that much later. Is this, is this something different or is this just with a project of this scope, the way, the way it's done?
I think, I think it's a good question. We're a little confused ourselves. I think the, the city planning wanted to add an abundance of caution for a landmark that's beloved by the community. You know, wanted us to go to, to talk to you guys and, and see if there are any additional comments. You know, in order for us to pull a building permit, as much I know, you know, we need to, we need to change the special permit. The drawings need to match our, our L P C approval. Right now, the drawings that we, you know, that are approved in 14 would allow us to build the stepped version and not the dome.
And that wasn't anticipated at the time that you got the landmarks approval? That you would need actually change the drawing?
No, um, no, it wasn't, or we would have done it then. But now that we're actually in front of D O B and, and trying to get, you know, and we'll, and we'll eventually go to them for, for, you know, approval of our drawings in order to actually build the thing. City planning flagged that, you know, we ought to go back and make this minor modification to the special permit.
Okay. Chasler and then Iris Cabera.
Thank you. Actually, Dave, you answered my question about what the special permit actually covers. And it just sounds like you said you changed because of the technical investigations changed and that requires a permit? A change in the permit?
That's right.
Thank you. Iris.
Hi, Miss Lombino. I have a quick question regarding on the affordable housing, the Domino Promise to the community. I didn't hear about that for a long time and I would like to know the status of those apartments.
Sure. You know, the first building that opened a domino, there are 105 affordable units at 325 Kent. Those are fully leased. As we begin to lease up One South First, the second building to go up a domino. We're eager to, to, to go ahead and do a lottery there. What, what's happened is there's a delay that's unfortunate because of a, of a change in state law that means that we would have to make the affordable units available at a higher rate than what we promised. So we've been working hard since then with some community partners to ensure that we're able to preserve the affordability that was promised by me and, and our, and our team back in 2014. So we have another 67 units that will come, that will be hopefully made available as soon as the spring in One South First. And then there's another close to five, four or 500 units of affordable in the rest of the development.
Okay, thank you, thank you for the information.
Yep.
Thank you. Are there any other questions?
Yes, Chairperson in the Q and A panel, someone had a question. Southside H O A is asking, why did the Department of City Planning request the minor modifications?
Yeah, I mean, as I said, you know, it is a two step process. The, the L P C approval, you know, L P C has a requirement that you go, you go and part of the community board to present changes to landmark structures like the landmark refinery. And then in actually in order to pull a building permit and construct the actual building, you need to make sure that the design approval and the construction drawings are aligned. So that's what we're doing now. We're changing the special permit that was originally approved in 14 to match the subsequent L P C approval that was approved in 2014.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions?
There's another one. From Jordan Epstein. Which building was it which is facing changes in affordability requirements due to the new state requirements?
That's One South First.
That's it. Were you reading another question, Chasler?
No, that's it.
Okay, thank you so much, Dave. Be healthy, be safe.
Thank you, you too.
Likewise, thank you. Next item on the agenda is a briefing on the installation of smart meters in C B one. Mr. Terrace, Mr. Terrace Kelly? Mr. Kelly?
Hey, good evening, Chair Fuller.
Good afternoon, good evening, how are you?
All right, thanks for having me. Thank you everyone for having me. A lot of familiar faces on C B one, but thank you again for the opportunity. My name is Terrence Kelly. I work in corporate affairs at Con Edison in the Brooklyn office. And tonight, we just wanted to give you a, a quick briefing on the, the smart meter installation and rollout. Just because it's going to be, if you haven't seen it already, it's all over C B one in North Brooklyn. And we figure this is an excellent opportunity. Am I allowed to share? It doesn't look like I'm given the option to share my screen.
Yes.
Oh, thank you so much. All right, let me pull it up and then we'll just take it from there. All right. So to go quickly through it, what are smart meters, the benefits, when you'll get them, how you'll be notified? Now, if this was in the auditorium at swing sixties, I'd do a show of hands and most people would say you've already received something in the mail or you've gotten this installation done already. But we think from a public safety standpoint and from a larger sort of infrastructure standpoint, it's important to just go through it very quickly. Con Edison is now, has the electric utility for Brooklyn and all of New York City. We are in the process of switching out every single analog electric meter with a digital device that's run through a wireless mesh network for communications. Typically, the average meter reader would come to your, your household or your place of business once a month and do an estimated bill. They would do a meter reading or you give an estimated bill read through calling it into the 800 number. Now, we do, we have the ability to do incremental reads every 15 minutes as encrypted information is sent in packets through the meter device back to Con Edison to give almost real time consumption data to households and businesses. So it's a larger infrastructure. The meters are included with networks that are, that are throughout, you know, very similar to cellular infrastructure. But also gives us the opportunity to create a brand new sort of spectrum of benefit. You're able to truly control costs and, you know, I think one of the reasonable expectations that people have in the, in the 21st century at least is that, is that the customer experience is made better by having more access to more information, be it in banking, in cellular service, and now in your electric utility. So if you have more information, you can make more informed decisions. Also, remote meter readings allow, you know, eliminate the, the estimated bill reads. So that's fantastic. And especially in the age of COVID, when we have eliminated in person meter readings as a, as an, out of an abundance of caution, this also helps. Meters, smart meters also provide faster restoration in times of outage, either by storm or through emergency or damage. So every time there is an emergency, we're able to ping these devices from the control centers at Con Edison and to determine, you know, telemetry exactly where the outages are and who's out and how long it will take. So we've been ramping up that technology over the last few years and working, continuing to do so. The high bill alerts are always important. You know, if you, if you can get a text message from your cellular provider that says you're at 90% data for the month, we believe that you have a reasonable expectation to get that from your electric utility as well. So we're doing everything we can to, to allow customers to use this information wisely. And it also leads to better, greener choices. So you have much more information to make informed decisions on equipment upgrades in your house. If you recognize that you have a very old dishwasher that just every time you run it, you can see the spike and it causing you a bit of grief, you can decide that it, it might be time to make that upgrade and we can help you with, you know, rebates and programs like that as well. So when and how? We've been rolling these out. We started in Westchester and Staten Island in the less dense neighborhoods a while back. And I, I came to Con Edison in June of 20, sorry, February of 2018. And we had just started in Brooklyn. We're about 75% done across the borough. In North Brooklyn, we're still going block by block. But we are moving right along and we hope to be about 90% done by the end of this year and about 95% done by the, I think, March in Brooklyn specifically. And then we will be done throughout the city December 2021. These, I think these numbers are probably likely to get pushed back, you know, a few months because of COVID and the New York state on pause. We took about four months off, five months off over the summer before we started doing outside installations. We still are very cautious about the way that we put our customers and our workforce in, you know, in safety first. So the meter installs happen Monday to Saturday from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. You don't need to be home if the meters are outside. In my case, meters in my basement because I have a two family house. And I needed to schedule, I was given the opportunity to schedule an appointment. We just asked that people, you know, don't block the meter, don't put anything near there when people are able to come. Or if it's outside your house, nothing's blocking access to the meter for, for the installer's safety. And the installs take about 15 minutes. The gas ones that we don't do in Brooklyn take a little bit longer. From a public safety standpoint, you'll see our contractors out and about everywhere. I live in C B four, I've been seeing these minivans for months now on every single block going through. So we're doing millions of these, you know, we're doing thousands of these a day across the service territory. We're doing millions, you know, over the course of, you know, four years. And if you have any questions about public safety when it comes to our contractors, please do not hesitate to call the 1-800-75-CONED. I'm sorry, oh my gosh, I can't do it. That's the number you can check and validate their photo I D on that. There's no cost for this upgrade to the customer at the point of service. We've been receiving reports that many commercial customers have been complaining that scammers had been asking for upfront payments in cash or on prepaid cards or through Cash App that, that they're Con Edison employees and, and that they would turn their service off and not give them a new smart meter unless they pay it up. That's not true. We've been working with the precinct community councils throughout Brooklyn to this message out. So please do remind people, especially those who may be vulnerable or have, you know, immigration, immigrant populations, especially in the commercial quarters of Brooklyn, we've been seeing an uptick in these. seeing an uptick in these scams. So please do share that as well. So we're doing 90-day postcards, we're doing 45-day letters, and we're doing day-of install hangers to let people know that they did get it done if they weren't around. Now, if you're around these days more often than not, you'll probably see them doing the install, or they'll go knock on your door to let you know that you're going to take a quick brief outage. These 45-day letters and the 90-day day postcards have been in all the zip codes of CB1 for a while now. And if you haven't received them already, you will very soon. The good thing about the smart meters is that, and I've seen it too, over the summer, it was a, it was a lot of weeks of heat wave, and we just really, it helped me understand exactly what went into my energy consumption working at home, even as a ConEdison employee. And it really did give me the opportunity to break down my energy consumption, you know, truly by 15-minute intervals, to understand exactly when I was using the most and what was contributing to these, these higher amounts of power consumption. So again, you can really, the more information that's plugged in over time, the more information you get back on the backend. And if you have any questions, please visit us at the website to learn more. If you have any specific questions that I can help answer offline, I also provided my email on this last page as well. Just be, I'd be mindful of time. I just wanted to also, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention the energy efficiency programs that we have in CB1, specifically the neighborhood programs for lighting and HVAC upgrades. A lot of these programs have been in existence for a while, and they've been very successful in different networks throughout Brooklyn. But please, reach out to me if you'd like to learn more. There are a lot of free lighting upgrades for specifically in CB1. There's also a tremendous amount of incentive and benefit specifically targeting CB1 because of the network it's in, and our, our good faith efforts to reduce demand over time so that we don't have to put more infrastructure in the ground. We found that customer-sided solutions are working very well in parts of East and Central Brooklyn. And now that we've expanded the program to both Queens and North Brooklyn, we're looking to create some more buzz about it. It's been tough with COVID. It's been tough to, you know, get that, that message across because it's not an easy sell to talk about kilowatt hours and, you know, measurements of, of energy. But there's a lot of people on this phone who are in, you know, in, you know, pretty sophisticated when it comes to real estate development, when it comes to property management and data literacy. And we hope that you'll be able to help us get word out about these things and more. Battery storage is a big deal, renewable energy and distributed generation, big deal. And if you'd like to talk more about it, my contact info is there. And Chair Fuller, if you have any questions, I'd open it up. Otherwise, I appreciate your time and consideration.
Thank you so much, Mr. Kelly. I don't see any hands in the chat. Does anybody have a question?
I have a question, ma'am.
Is this Iris?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
So, so my question basically, I don't have a question. I have literally a complaint because I've been receiving a lot of calls from, from the community. They asked, "Do you guys share the Mira? The electrical bill is so high that they cannot afford to pay that." Also, you guys claim that because you can read the Mira, you send a bill of $500, $600 to a senior that they can't afford to pay that. Every time, every time that they try to contact the number, it's nobody available. So I don't know exactly what is going on. It happened to me also, and for, to my bill, and I, I've been trying to get in contact with someone for over three weeks. I can imagine seniors or people that don't speak English, how can they deal with this situation?
Yeah, I'm sorry to hear that that's the circumstance. You know, I, I certainly want to, you know, make clear if I get the opportunity during, you know, I think the first week of March, second week of March, we instituted no fees for late payment, no shut-offs, except for in emergency circumstances when it was a life safety. And we've also been doing a robust outreach regarding payment plans for individuals, households, and small businesses in Brooklyn. I, you know, I certainly can attest that the, you know, the call center, when you call, you know, depending on the time of day, certainly the volume is considerable at times, and it gets tough to, to get in touch with someone. But the smart meters have, they don't make your bill go up, and they don't make your bill go down. What they do is they just, you know, they more accurately reflect your level of consumption in the household. So if the old meters were not doing a, giving a complete picture of what the level of consumption in the house was, then it's likely that there could have been a spike in the, in the bill. But also during the summer is a lot of people staying home more often meant that we were seeing an increase in residential consumption, especially in, in historically residential neighborhoods, whereas commercial districts, central business districts were seeing a decline, a sharp decline, in fact, in, you know, in Manhattan. So a couple of things I'll say is that we are working very closely with the city in New York on low, moderate income programs for all, for any eligible programs for seniors that they may be able to take advantage of, be it SCRE, or we, or the $40 a month rebate we were providing for air conditioner relief over the summer. There's a lot of programs. And if, I'd be happy to take this offline and provide more information, because I definitely don't want anyone to suffer, you know, to feel like there's no one there to listen to them. And we can always use these opportunities to, to just remind people that, you know, the corporate side of ConEdison team is available to talk things through, and you're more than, I'm more than happy to help trouble-suiters work on some cases for you.
That would be great, because I agree with you, it's a lot of programs. But in order to get after the program, you have to talk to someone from internet, and it's been impossible. And believe me, I tried many times, not only for me, but for my clients.
I got you.
And I called every single time, and nobody picked up the phone. I wait for like an hour, hour and a half, and nobody picked up the phone.
All right, thank you. Jan. I think I was called on, but go on, Toby.
Hello, Jan, what's going on?
Okay, is my mute on properly? Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay. The question is, doesn't the smart meter cost money? Because I got a bill coming that it's $599 for the smart meter. And the question, that's one question. It costs money to put that in? And how many are employees losing their jobs because of this putting in the smart meter? It's helping or hurting employment?
It's, it's good. I'll start with the first one, because it kind of broke up. And let me just say, you said you got something that said you're going to get charged $600?
Yes.
Oh, let's, if you don't mind sharing that with me afterwards, I'd love to look, take a look at that, because that is concerning.
Okay.
I just want to make sure I, you know, I'm understanding and circum, you know, as mentioned, we're not charging people. That's not the way this thing works. The infrastructure upgrades ultimately serve ConEdison's business interests, right? Also, you know, in terms of meter readers, we've, we've retrained the entire workforce of meter readers. We've had no layoffs. We had an agreement with the union as well, that people would be retrained and put into different, deployed into different areas and different departments. And the benefit is that we're able to use their, their experiences in the field and their field technician experiences to better serve different departments and lend some sort of street credibility, if it were. And also, the, the level of knowledge that a meter reader has of the neighborhoods throughout Brooklyn is invaluable to, to some of the departments that we have. So without, without, you know, not trying to sugarcoat it, like we've not had any layoffs, and we've retrained all meter readers for different positions. We'll still have a certain level of workforce, because there's invariably going to be people who either hold out on the meters or decide that it's just not their, you know, it's not going to be them that has one.
Good news.
Yeah, for sure. Hey, Toby?
Just wanted to comment that I've had an opportunity over the last couple of years to engage with Terrence on issues that we've dealt with. And, you know, just to Iris and Jan's comments, he's a great guy and very helpful in anything that I've reached out. So I just wanted to commend you, Terrence, and a great presentation.
Thanks. I appreciate that.
Hi, this is Maria Vieira. I just want to add to that, Terrence. Terrence, thank you so much for that presentation, and it's a pleasure seeing you here. And yep, I share Toby's sentiments. If anyone ever needs any type of assistance with the ConEd, Terrence is the person to call.
Thank you very much. Very nice to see you.
There's a question in the Q and A.
Okay, Steve?
It's from Joseph Frantz. How much total, I guess it's capital expenditure is associated with this project from ConEd's perspective? And what is ConEd's estimated payback period on the smart meters? Will the labor cost savings from reductions in human meter readers be passed on to customers? Any estimates? And also, just FYI, Dialis Alana Cohen from Senator Kavanaugh's office said that they're, they're there, they can be connected, and want to know when, so someone can DM them.
All right, Steve, I got the answer for the first one. It's a, it's a, I believe the number is 1.5 billion is the total investment. I can, I can confirm that number for you? In terms of the, the return period, or the amortization, or whatever we want to call it, I can get those numbers and drill down and give you some accurate information.
Well, just saying, it's not me, it's someone who posed the question in the Q and A panel.
Oh, yeah.
Joseph Frantz.
Joe, oh, okay. I can definitely, let me, let me refer to the documents that we filed with the PSC and make sure that I have my numbers right. But that's, I mean, those, those are, I'm happy to reach, to reach out and get those answers to them. I should also say about, I think at this, before we put in about, you know, 75% of the country, prior to ConEdison starting to deploy smart meters, already had smart meter infrastructure or early technologies installed. And so basically, we, we were way to the game because, one, we had to get it right when it comes to New York City, just because of the sensitivity of being in the, you know, the capitals of commerce and, and also the fact that the density is so much more significant and different than any other place or landscape in the, in the United States. It just took a long time to understand exactly what we need to do to successfully work this out. So, yeah, if anyone else has anything further, Chair Fuller, I'll definitely, I'm sorry for taking too much time.
Okay. Thank you so much, Terrence. Be healthy, be safe. Okay.
You too, thank you so much.
Senator Kavanaugh? Didn't you tell me he was here, Steve?
Eliana Cohen from his office connected, and she was wondering when he would be able to speak.
I called him. He wasn't here before. I thought they was on.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna call, I'm gonna go to the next item, and let me know when he get here, when he's connected, okay?
Sounds good.
Next item on the agenda is the physical budget. Did anybody want to speak on the budget and submit their written responses? Is anybody that wants to speak on the budget? No? Okay. Yeah, okay. Next, is there any comments on the liquor license? Is there any comments on the liquor license? No? Okay, that, that concludes our public session. So the senator's still not connected? I don't see him. Please connect him.
Dialis, I have to apologize. I forgot to tell you that I need to make a land use committee report.
It should be on the list. I don't know.
I'm not on the, I'm sure, I may be on the list because I, I submitted a, a report, but just to let you know, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna move on. We're going into our board meeting now. Can we have a moment of silence, please? I'd like to dedicate this moment of silence to Gina Argento and her family, to Sonia Glacies and her family who lost family members. And we'd also like to dedicate it to the people that's still on the front lines, that's essential workers and doing everything they can to get us through this pandemic. Thank you. Can I have the roll call, Jerry, please? And everybody that's not speaking, please mute yourself.
Gina Argento.
Here.
Bogdan Bakarowski.
Here.
Lisa Biamonte.
Here.
Gina Barros. No answer. Tion.
Here.
Eric Brusitis. No response. Tom Burrows.
Here.
Here.
Iris Cabrera.
Yeah.
Phil Capone.
Here.
Frank Carbone.
Here.
Stephen Chesler.
Here.
Michael Chiracella. No answer. Teresa Sensiata. No answer. Giovanni D'Amato.
Here.
Erin Drinkwater. Erin Drinkwater's here. Arthur Dabonowski. Arthur's here. T. Willis Alkins.
Here.
T. Willis Alkins.
Here.
Here. Julia Amanda Foster.
Here.
Was here. Chair Fuller. Goldstein.
Here.
Joel is here. Joel Gross. No answer. Sonia Iglesias.
Here, here.
Sonia's here. Moisha Indan. No answer. Bozina Kaminsky.
Present.
Bozina's here. Avram Katz. No answer. William Claggsbald.
Here.
William's here. Ryan Coonan. No answer. Yo Lando.
Here, here, here.
Okay, Ryan's in the house. Yo Lando. Mariana. Abraham Leibowitz. No answer. Yolo. No answer. Trina McKivin.
Here.
Sante Michel.
Here.
Toby Moskowitz.
What? No.
Toby Moskowitz.
Here, here.
Martin Neidman.
Here.
Rabbi Niederman. No answer. Karen Nieves.
Here.
Mary O'Dommerck. Mary O'Dommerck. No answer. Janice Peterson.
I'm here, I'm here.
Mary's here. Janice Peterson. No answer. Dana Recklin.
Here.
Isaac Soffer.
Jerry, unmute.
Rob Solano in the house.
James Stewart. Del Teague.
Here.
Tommy Torres.
Present.
William Vega.
Here, here.
Maria Vieira.
Present.
Stephen Whiteberg. Stephen Whiteberg. No answer. Simon Weiser. Did I hear Stephen Whiteberg?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Jerry, did you answer? No? Yes?
36 members answering the call. Daniel Marks present.
Yes, and what about Tish?
I didn't hear Tish. What about?
On. She can't, she doesn't have a computer.
36 members answering the call, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much, Jerry. Can I have an approval of the agenda? Roll call.
I make a motion, Bozina Kaminsky.
Phil Capone, second.
Okay, a motion has been made and seconded by Bozina, motion made by Bozina, and seconded by Phil Capone. Can we have a roll call vote, please? Anybody that's not speaking, please turn, mute yourself.
This is a roll call. Vote for what, Madam Chair?
To approve the agenda. Do we need it?
I don't, I mean, as long as everybody votes in favor, if there's anybody against, I think for the purpose of approving the agenda, we'd be I don't, I mean, as long as everybody votes in favor, if there's anybody against, I think for the purpose of approving the agenda, we'd be fine.
Okay, well, since the essence of time, is there any objections to the agenda? None?
No.
Okay, approval of the minutes? Motion? Can I get a motion to approve the agenda in a second?
Rob Solano approves the motion.
Dell Teague, a second.
Bob made a motion to approve the minutes. Dell Teague made a second. Is there any objections to the minutes?
I have to abstain. Marty Needleman, I have to abstain.
One abstention? Any other abstentions against? Okay, one abstention. Next item on the agenda is committee reports.
Dialis, I have a question. There's someone in the Q and A said that they were trying to make a comment on the liquor license, but ended wrote and said they were told that they could speak, but we missed that. So it's the South Side HOA, I'm just seeing in the Q and A.
They wanted to make a comment on the liquor license?
Yes.
Are they, is it still, are they still there?
Yes, they are.
Okay, we'll give them two minutes.
Okay.
The person that wanted to make the comment on the liquor license, please, Steve.
Dialis, I have to find them to turn them on.
Are they on the phone?
They're on the WebEx call. It's South Side HOA.
South Side HOA.
Okay, I have, I have her down as the panelist now, if she could speak.
Okay, South Side, do you want to speak about liquor license? The person that wants to speak about liquor license?
Think they have to, outside HOA, unmute it. You have to press unmute, South Side, and then you can speak. You're showing up now as a panelist.
What happened? Apparently, the person can't connect themselves to speak.
I unmuted them. I unmuted her.
Hello? Can you hear me now? Now you unmuted me.
Yes.
You can unmute yourself when you're a panelist.
No, I can't. Trust me, I'm very savvy with WebEx. You can't. I couldn't. You had to unmute me. I appreciate you muting me, though. Thank you.
Okay.
So there's two things. Two people over here, there's two of us at my house right now from the, one, I'm representing the South Side Homeowners Association, so homes of like 82 homeowners, and then I have my neighbor here who also sent an email that was, also told you'd be able to give two minutes, two minutes time on her issue that she sent a separate email about. So I wanted to speak specifically about Mexico 2000. It's, I see that they're on the list to renew their liquor license. I adamantly oppose them receiving their license due to the excessive amplified noise, them using a backyard that is not even part of their property to serve food. They have a live DJ. This has been going on before COVID and has been going on for the last 10 years. They continue to do things illegally and think they're against the law. Many precincts has visited them and warned them, yet they continue to operate in this fashion. Not only is this, the reason why we're opposing their, their ability to have a liquor license is because the amount of noise that happens until three or four o'clock in the morning of drunk people screaming and throwing bottles at neighboring buildings. And I wrote a long email, but there's more information about that. Homeowners have submitted pictures, have submitted video, have submitted lots of things to us at the Homeowners Association. I'd like to know when they actually appear in person, when we can contest this, and what is we, that we can do as a community members to prevent them from getting the license renewed. In addition to, what can the community board do in cracking down on use of, without a permit? They don't have a permit for their backyard. And they're using the backyard of Butterfly Hair Salon and Mexico 2000 Deli. The Department of, what is it? Department, not sanitation, the department that handles the food. Like, are they even, I don't even know if they're aware that they're conducting business in this manner. Can someone give me feedback? Anyone?
Tom, do you have any feedback for her?
No.
So what are the next steps? You're the community board. What are the next steps?
Licensed by the New York State Liquor Authority, there's a complaint page on their webpage.
I, I understand, but what does a community board do? What is the, what is the arm of the community board do? You guys put in recommendation, right?
Tom? We've, we've heard your complaint. That's
Okay, but I'm asking you, what is the protocol that the community board operates in? Like, so what are the next steps? What do you guys do? You've heard the complaint. Now what? What can we expect?
I really couldn't tell you right now.
Well, what's the general process is what I'm getting at. Can you please elaborate? You've been doing this for quite some time. I would greatly appreciate that.
We're not gonna have a debate. You just, you gave us the complaint. We'll deal with it.
I am not, I'm trying to debate. I'm trying to understand so I can level set my expectations, so I can share this with the homeowners. What is the process when a member of the community board has a complaint about a building? What does the community board do when they receive such a complaint? That's my question.
The complaint needs to be forwarded to the community board with the complaint number on it, so the community board can follow up on it.
Okay, so we have several. We have about 20. So should we send that to you directly, Tom?
Yes, miss, yes, miss, just send us the complaint with the 311 numbers on it.
Right.
And we'll follow up. Thank you.
Okay, aside from that, you guys following up, do you guys then circle back the following meeting?
Since we're on New York State pause, it's very difficult to do anything right now. We're getting no guidance from the state of New York on how this is supposed to happen. So send us copies of the complaints with the complaint numbers.
Okay, I understand that we're on pause, but I'm asking in general. I'm just trying to have an understanding.
Miss, miss, thank you. There's not, there's nothing else that we can do to resolve your issue at this time. Like you said, New York, SLA New York State Liquor Department is on pause right now. And we don't have clear guidance at this time. So forward your complaint with the complaint numbers to the board. Thank you. Have a good evening. Okay. Community reports, land use Dell Teague. Dell?
Yes, here I am. Thank you. All right, so we did not have anything that we needed to vote on. However, we had a presentation by the, by Acme Fish and Rubenstein Partners. They are planning to get certified as a Eulurk application to, to build a new, to build a new separate building for Acme Fish, which would give them approximately 30,000 more square feet than what they have now. Then they will demolish the building that Acme Fish is using, and then they want to build an ancillary nine-story building that would have 580,000 square feet. Ground floor would be retail and the rest would be office space. They anticipate that if the office spaces are filled, they could have as much as 2,000 employees. So the, the committee struggled with balancing two things, basically. It, it's well-known that the committee has valued Acme Fish's involvement with the community and services to the community. And if indeed that the, the ancillary building and the new construction would bring, would bring jobs, that of course is a value. On the other hand, the committee members felt that although the architecture was very interesting, it's also pretty imposing. And they felt that it may be too out of character with the close by Greenpoint Historic District and the Bushwick Inlet Park for the whole board to accept it. So we, we did ask them, since they're only getting 30,000 extra square feet, why would, would that justify jumping to such a large development? We also wondered if it was realistic to think that there would be so many jobs. Because somebody needs to mute themselves. Anyway, we were also questioning whether there would be so many jobs because we're not so sure that, that the office spaces that are already in the community are really being utilized. The other question we had for them was whether they, whether they had had Chicago studies done with respect to the, the effect that the building, that the development will have on the park and the close by residences. And also there were concerns about the effect that this development will have on the nearby traffic. There are a lot of issues within that area.
Excuse me, Dell. Rob Solano, Rob, can you please mute your microphone? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Jerry. So we did, we did feel that the committee needed to be brought into a conversation with the Transportation Committee regarding the effect that the project would have on the nearby traffic issues, and they agreed that, that they would do that. So ultimately, this will be brought before the, the full board, and it will be brought again before the Land Use Committee. And again, there will have to be, I think, a balancing of, you know, the, the value that, that Acme Fish, that keeping Acme Fish here in the community and possibly more office space and jobs has versus the, the effect that it, that the development will have on the nearby community. We did ask the developer to consider whether it could possibly downsize their plan. So again, we have no, this is just a presentation, just something to let the community board know about, give you something to think about and something that certainly we, we can discuss. I don't know if anybody has any thoughts, or you just want to just think about it.
Dell, I'd love to add a few, one comment if possible.
Yeah, sure.
Something, actually something new, they came out to me this afternoon. And I did a little bit of research based on the, on the lot that they're actually owned by Acme Fish, not directly, by actually holding company, or which are property of the Castle family. And, and something interesting came out, but I will need to be verified, you know, I'm not a lawyer, a property lawyer, but I went to the Department of Finance website. So what it came out, they actually, there are two companies, they appear to be under name. One is called Chamir, and another one is actually owns another lot. So the total of square footage that it seems to be on by Acme Fish currently is about 82,000 square feet. You know, all the 134,000 of the entire block. That means that they already own 60% of that block. And they, they own this block, this lot since a long time. It was transferred from the grand, great-grandfather in 1990 or something like that. So they didn't pay rent for a very long time. And I know the presentation of city planning, as I went to some of the documents that were presented, they were available on the NewYorkCity.gov website. They appear they've been claiming a lot that the only way to have them staying there is like going through this development. But to me, and they also make $125 million in annual revenue. They have opened two years ago a production facility in North Carolina. They've acquired another smoke fish facility in Massachusetts. I mean, they've been doing very well. They didn't pay any rent for probably three decades, four decades, you know? So they already own 82,000 square feet. They have 60% of the ownership of the entire block. And, you know, and I love, as I said, you know, Acme Fish, but it seems that they really, they want to get into a different business, which is a development. I don't think, you know, many other manufacturing businesses go to, you know, more hardship, you know, they have to pay rent. They don't pay any rent. They just own property. And without them, no development could happen. And they had a three property, or which one is the lot of ABC Stone. I don't know if you know the block. They have three property. They only have three different ownership. And the only thing is that the Rubenstein Partner, which they constitute a company, which is called RP Inlet LLC, they made a memorandum of understanding, which is a preliminary contract in case they get the approval from Eulurk, which they will have to sell the three lots, but they are three different owners. So Rubenstein Partner doesn't own anything right now, but the family, Acme, the Castle family, Acme Fish owns already 60% of the block. So if the narrative was, please help us, otherwise we can't stay there, this is quite questionable. I want them to stay there personally, but I'd love them to stay there without having to impact the community with something the community doesn't need. And I don't think personally, what I've read, but you, you verify, and all the other members of the committee can verify too, and so of the board, but I just want to add this other information that may be valuable, but they'll need to be verified a little bit more accurately. That's all.
Okay, thanks. Anyone else have anything they want to add now? Okay, well, again, we're not putting on this, yes.
Marty Needleman.
Yes, Marty.
Where is, where are they located? It's really in a totally commercial area, right?
Well, yes, but the, the, the issue is that the, the historic district, residential district is very close by, and I think it's three blocks away. And the Bushwick Inlet Park is right over there, too.
I got you. Okay, thanks.
Something very important to add is that a change of zoning, such going from an M3 to an M1, and especially an M5, which will allow them to use it as a hotel, and definitely will become commercial. It never happened in 40 years. Actually, the other time it happened, it was with 25 Kent, and against was Rubenstein Partner, which they made a change of zoning in the industrial sector, which never happened in 40 years in our neighborhood. So this will be the second case in few years through Rubenstein Partner happening. But the jump is even more dramatic because we're losing an M3, and, and it's going to become a commercial, an M15 with a commercial property that will allow to be used as an hotel. And, and we saw the trend in neighborhoods, so it's something the community should also think about. We need another hotel.
Well, the other concern, let me just say, the other concern that was raised was if indeed we don't really need this office space, and if they do convert it to a hotel, but that's not really needed, then would they make another application down the road to turn the hotel into residential? But again, we also pointed out to each other that we're now speculating on several steps. But, you know, the, the, the bottom line is this is a big, it is a big development. Karen, yeah?
I just want to point out, it's in the industrial business zone.
Can't hear you, Karen.
They would need to file, it's in the industrial business zone. They would need to file a special permit for hotels. They do not as a right allow hotels in the industrial business zone any longer. So I just want to point that out.
Yeah, that, thank you. That's true. That's true.
Secondly, during the 2005 rezoning, Acme Smokefish, along with other businesses like Brooklyn Brewery, they're the ones who spearheaded to save what's the Greenpoint Industrial Business Zone. So they were the ones who asked to be zoned M3 for protection, to, for, to actually preserve manufacturing to actually preserve manufacturing in that district. So I just wanted to point that out as well.
Thank you. I don't think this is such a clear black and white issue. I think there are going to be differing opinions. And I really appreciate their coming to us ahead of time so that we can be forewarned that this is something we are going to have to grapple with. We did ask them to see if they consider, could consider some downsizing.
Yeah, so I also, Bill, if I could add something. I've had conversations with people afterwards. And one, you know, maybe concerning situation is, what if at some point, you say this, you know, we're zoning through, but at some point Acme wanted to get out, and they sold, what is to require Rubenstein to house another manufacturing facility there versus building something else? You know, because in the incentivized zone where 25 Kent is, to get the density, they have to have a certain percentage of manufacturing in their building. But with an M15, which they're proposing, that they don't have that requirement. That may be something to consider also.
Yeah, yeah. I think the bottom line is we've been burned so many times that I think we have a right to be cautious.
But also, finally, something very important, and it's connect to what Steve was saying. What is it very important today, despite the Acme Fish owns four or five blocks of the total seven, eight blocks that they form the block, they are separate lots, that having smaller lots create diversity. Now, if one factory decides to rent 10 of them, entire block, but the moment they don't occupy or they don't manufacture there, they could be reused as a smaller lot, which are more accessible for other manufacturing business or other industrial business. But the moment we have unified an entire lot, only some merger corporation can have the capability to afford those lots because they'll never be resubdivided as a 5,000 or 10,000 square feet lot, which sometime in our community, it's important to maintain smaller industrial lot to the new gigantic industrial lot. So that diversity will be lost forever.
All right. Anyone else? Because we should move along here. Okay, so let's go to the second discussion that we have. Again, it was a discussion. And this was to explore the feasibility of requiring developers to take responsibility for infrastructure that their project will significantly stress. I know that we did raise this issue with Two Trees. And we have in the past had conditions where we conditioned approval on a developer's setting up a fund to perhaps fund a park or something else. So in any case, we discussed a recent attempt by the mayor to condition approval of a land use application on making a developer agree to finance infrastructure needs around, in and around the affected area. Now, that fell through, but the committee felt that now was a good time to start exploring more, you know, how this might apply to our community. And so we thought of things such as stresses that are placed on our sanitation services, traffic congestion, related safety ramifications, subway congestion, perhaps subway, the need for more money to upgrade the subway stations, strain on our park maintenance, road maintenance. So we decided that we would start by reaching out to elected officials and other officials to find out if there's precedence for doing this and what their thought was. And then we would have a, we would have a meeting with the Transportation, Public Safety and Environmental Committees. We can do a WebEx. And we're going to continue our discussion of this at our next land use meeting and probably the meeting beyond that. Our land use meetings are typically, routinely scheduled the first Monday of the month, unless it's a holiday. So I just wanted to bring that up and raise it for people to think about. Simon, you might want to mute your speaker.
That concludes your report, Bill.
And the other thing is, I just want to tell you that Sayed Ahmed from DCP responded very, right away to our request to be informed when the city or state agencies try to seek to modify plans that we've already approved. He said that he agreed with our position. He assured us that DCP will guide the applicants to reach out to us as soon as they finalize some proposed actions, and then to keep us in regular, give us regular updates prior to certification. And he reminded us that Sari Plattkin and Alexandra Pati Diaz are also always available to answer our questions about planning and zoning related matters and pending ULP applications. And that does conclude my report.
Thank you, Bill. I must remind everyone once again, if you're not speaking, please mute yourself. If you're not speaking, please mute yourself. The next, do we know, do we know if the senator is here yet? No? Okay, Trina McKeva, environmental.
Hi, I'm going to ask actually the Chair, Steve Tesler, to give the report because his depth of knowledge is deeper than mine when it comes to these issues. So Steve, can you do this?
Steve? For the sake of time, I will come back to you.
Okay.
All right, I'm sorry. I was, I couldn't unmute myself.
We're coming back to you, Steve.
Okay.
Maria Viera, Budget Committee.
Good evening, everyone. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Wonderful. So I just want to, I want to try to, I don't know if it's me. Do I hear an echo background? Okay, so I just want to go briefly through. I think that everyone received the reconciliation form and the final expenditures for the City Council discretionary funding award. So I don't want to go back in time, but I do want to remind everyone in very synopsis of a timeline that back in February, we approved, on February 11th, we approved to extend the, part of the discretionary funding on hiring a consultant.
I'm sorry, Maria, I'm getting a lot of feedback and I can't hear you. We have like maybe two mics open. And I can hear, all I heard was very worried.
She's been having the mic open for a while, so she should shut it off.
Mario Domeric, could you please shut off your microphone? Mario Domeric?
Yeah, it's muted.
It's not muted. Now it's muted. Thank you.
Okay, can you hear me better now? Wonderful, thank you. So I'm going to go back, regress a little bit in time. February 11th, we approved to hire a consulting agency that would help us to develop a zoning guide, a curriculum and training session and research and discovery of certain areas in Williamsburg. Since then, just again tapping in time, we agreed on those expenditures. We met every month. Up until, of course, COVID, when we had a pause, Budget Committee continued to have bi-weekly progress meetings with Hester Street. And after April 20th, also, we were accompanied by the Executive Committee. So throughout the pandemic, we continued to meet bi-weekly with Hester until the final date of the training. And I want to, and I hope that everyone received the reconciliation. Julia said she hadn't heard what I said, but there was a reconciliation and budget form that was sent out to the entire board. And it talks about the $42,000. It was Hester Street Collaborative. We agreed on $19,000. The payment was submitted June. I don't want to go through every single column, every single row. But it was an expense for $315 on PC Richard. That's because on June 15th, there was a request by the district manager to purchase webcams for the district office computers because they didn't have none. And in view of COVID and now having to have virtual meetings, that was a need. Everything else that was agreed, $243 for the CDW APC backups, the shredder, upgrading the internet, which was a $700 expense, the zone books that every single board member received. There were 60 copies, and I think that there are maybe some extras hanging out at the district office. I'm not sure if everyone actually picked up their copy, but that was an expense of $2,737. We, and I'm going to skip the live streaming, and I'll tell you in a minute. And $4,800 for the handheld microphones and the speakers that we used at Ainsley Street for the in-person meetings. So we ended up, of the $42,500, we ended up spending $28,618.71. There is a $13,000 unspent balance. And the reason for that unspent balance is because we approved $13,200 to pay for the live streaming of the full board meetings. Now, those meetings did not happen post-COVID. And we did discuss doing some sort of amendment, getting approval to find different ways of spending the money. However, it was a very difficult and a challenging process throughout COVID, getting the city to approve any type of change to the approved budget. We weren't able to do that. There was pushback there. The city said they weren't handling or looking at budgets anymore, that it was what it was. There was no way to spend it. Therefore, they weren't going to have time to approve a new process and meeting with the board. And the city just wasn't trying to make any amendments and come back to the table with different expense approvals. So therefore, there's $13,000, $13,800 that was unspent, and I suspect went back into the city's pool. So there's also a reconciliation sheet that was shared with the board with every single item spent, with the coding and the total expenses, the balances, and the dates of payment. Does anyone at this point have any question about the $42,500 City Council discretionary award? The 2020 fiscal year. Might need to add that. I can't see if there's any question on the chat, if there's anything.
I have a question, Maria, but this is regarding the money that we did not spend. I know that the city, because of the COVID, there was additional expenses that everybody, and I will include the community board, that we may ask the city to cover, you know, because of the COVID. Did that, that was even mentioned when you had the discussion with the city regarding the budget?
They didn't mention any COVID-related expenses. They were just not trying to entertain any amendments to that allocation at the time.
Okay.
The city was just coming back with, we're not making any changes. We're not, at this time, we're not making, and June 30th came around, and nothing happened in terms of changing anything that ended fiscal year 2020 or any COVID-related expenses, any, nothing, nothing from the city, crickets.
Because, you know, you're aware that I'm a part of the Polish Slavic Center, and we do have a contract with the city and DEFTA. And we did have the leeway of submitting the COVID expenses. We did, you know, submitted the invoices to the city because of the COVID expenses. So I'm just thinking that maybe the community board could, I mean, we're not going to make up any, anything that didn't happen, you know, because that's not proper. But I know there were a lot of expenses that different organizations submit to the city, and they were reimbursed.
Bozino, were those related to discretionary funding allocations?
No, no.
Or contracts through the city?
Yes, yes.
So exactly. And so this is different because this is City Council discretionary funding. So those amendments that you were able to make, and I'm speaking right now without having any certainty that this is what, but I'm going to speak now from the other hat that I wear, you know, from working in a nonprofit. There were no changes to City Council discretionary funding. The changes that we received in the organization for which I work were for contracts. There were contract amendments based on COVID, but City Council money, no changes. We were told to continue operating, or in some cases, it depended, of course, on whatever the funding was for, the funding was related for. In this case, this was an allocation that was made to community boards when there was request to find out what to do, how to do. No response from the city. You know, like there's a guideline, this is what you're allowed to spend on. None of the items speak to COVID-related issues because, of course, nobody foresaw any COVID-related pandemic, you know, in terms of this type of allocation. So it was not, nothing.
Yeah.
Little time, and very little time to kind of get back and forth to the city to do this and meet with the board. I mean, it was really virtually impossible to make amendments to City Council discretionary fund. And if anybody knows how to or did, please, I would love to know. I would love to know. I mean, it's $13,000 that we could have, you know? And we did talk about, maybe we could buy PPEs for people that, you know, needed or to distribute. No, you can't distribute stuff. You can't, you know, you can't buy giveaways. You can't buy, so it's like, so what do you do?
Yeah, all right. Thank you. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I have a question. So, Maria.
That concludes your report, Maria.
Yeah, that concluded my report, but I, you know, I'm happy to answer questions, of course.
Okay, thank you. Chasler?
Yeah, just so, so related to the money that we were not able to spend on the live broadcasts. So is that like a use it or lose it situation? Like if we don't spend it, then essentially?
It's gone, it's gone.
It goes, I'm assuming that it goes back in the pot. Now, we'd have to go back to City Council or to the, I mean, perhaps district manager can inform better as to who the powers that be are the ones that we'd have to address moving forward after the fiscal year to find out if that money can be re, I mean, repurposed at this point, even though it's passed.
And the answer is no. All right. And the money was never given to us. That money, once we identified a source that we wanted to use the money on, that's when we went through the approval process with OMB in the City Council. And then the money was extracted and put in the code, and we're allowed to use it for the purpose that it was designated for. So the money was never returned because the money was never removed because the expense was never incurred. But just as a side note, this year's budget was cut by $8,700 because of the COVID. So the board's internal OTPS is, after incidentals, copy machine, and regularly recurring expenses for the office, the incidentals were left with a budget of like $3,300 for this year.
So it's not clear, so can we still utilize that money to purchase?
No, at the end of the fiscal year, it's gone. We asked if we could get an extension, and we were turned down.
Correct. And the extension was based on COVID.
Does that conclude your report, Maria?
It did. My, my report is over, I was just taking questions, thank you.
Did we ask city council people to advocate for us?
We did not ask the city council people to advocate for us.
I, I'm just suggesting that we should find out one last shot with Levin and Ronosso's running for borough president. Let's ask. I hate to lose that money, and so do you, I know that.
Absolutely.
Could I just add something?
Never hurts to ask.
No, never hurts.
If I could just add something, this happens, you know, with schools. If schools had like a hundred thousand, two hundred thousand in the budget at the end of the year, uh, with COVID, they pulled the money back. So this is not uncommon, it's just, we don't deal with it on a regular basis. But if schools had money sitting in their budget at the end of the year, which most likely many did, right, because of test prep and after-school programs, the city just pulled it all back. So um, you know, as much as it stinks that they took it, it's a common practice that the city uses.
No, I know that, I've run programs for a long time. I'm just saying, is that this is, as, as she said, this is an unusual situation. This is a, a special project that they were setting up to benefit community boards. They, we were stopped only because of COVID. It's worthwhile to ask, that's all. Are there any more questions? Are there any more questions on the budget? Any more comments, Maria?
I have no other comments.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you so much. Uh, Chasler, economic report?
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, yeah, the environmental committee, production committee met on October sixth. Um, President where, Erkrositis, myself, Willis Elkins, and Chair, you know, McKeever. Um, we didn't have a quorum, um, but we proceeded nonetheless. The, uh, the first item was the um, Department of Environmental Conservation presented on a manufactured gas plant remediation called the Nassau Works, which is loaded on, noted, located technically, it's, it's, it's in the Navy Yard, which is outside our district. Um, but it, um, you know, it's right across, it's a contaminated site, it's right across the street from parks and residences in our district. We were sent the notice, um, assuming they were taking that in mind. This is an area, uh, that's on Kent Avenue, between a climber, Waldo Channel. Um, and it's a three-point-seven acre site, it was a manufactured gas site from eighteen seventy-three to nineteen thirty-five, and then subsequently an oil service and salt storage. Um, and the, uh, you know, uh, what's common with uh manufactured gas plants is coal tar residue, which um, basically a byproduct that is called BTEX, which is um benzene, ethylbenzene, toluene, and xylene, and, and, and other things, and um, it's, the, uh, the contamination is, is very deep. It's um, you know, way, way, you know, just very, very deep, much deeper than, what was that, twenty, uh, twenty-five Kent, and especially fifty Kent, which um, was a super fun site. And it had, you know, extensive um extraction and um fill related to coal tar contamination. Um, uh, National Grid is the responsible party, so they'll be covering the costs of the remediation. Um, potentially will involve capping the site, and they will uh install extract, extraction wells from which they will remove, move product. It won't require tenting. Um, and um, and so they basically felt there's no danger to the playground or the baseball field or the residences nearby. There will be air monitoring on the perimeter of the site. Um, and then there were some questions. Um, and basically, Willis asked whether um migration of coal tar into the channel. Um, and reply was that it had migrated a depth of thirty feet below the surface, so settlement doesn't occur. Um, I just asked about the comparison to fifty and twenty-five Kent, which I spoke to, um, and about the air monitoring. And um, Trina asked about restrictions of the site post-remediation, and the site would be limited to commercial use and remain subject to easement. Uh, Marie asked about a timeline that's still in design. Um, but, you know, may approximately two years for the full process, you know, um, to go through in terms of designing the remediation, et cetera, and implementing it. And uh, she says there was no vote or anything taken. Uh, there was someone from the Department of Health there as well, who, you know, answered questions about the um, you know, potential hazards to uh residents and parkgoers nearby. Then the, uh, the second item was um related to the National Grid North Brooklyn Pipeline Expansion Rate Case. So Kim Frechek, who is, you know, a presenter, has spoken to the committee and the board in the past, um, came in and gave us an update um, with what, you know, it's called the Metropolitan Resilient Infrastructure Project, AKA the MRI. Um, and, you know, it's just been thousands and thousands of comments submitted uh to, you know, from the community and beyond against this project. And so um, there's negotiations going on uh behind the scenes between the government and National Grid and the community. Um, so to, to put pressure on, uh, it's been recommended that we, you know, we, we submitted a, a letter resolution to Governor Cuomo back in February. So to keep the pressure on and to follow up, we, we want to um, we're, the committee unanimously recommended that we submit a similar letter to Mayor de Blasio. He can affect permits related to National Grid that they may need. Um, you know, especially related to uh National Grid expanding their liquid, liquefied national gas depot in Greenpoint. And additionally, a similar letter to Commissioner John Rhodes, Chair of the New York Public Service Commission, asking for denial of National Grid's request, uh, hike to fund the MRI project. Um, both uh, the text of both letters is attached, um, if people want to read, read the details, but it's, you know, similar to the one we um said we issued in February. So therefore, we um, we need a uh, a vote to uh, basically to um, request that the letters go out to both the mayor and to Commissioner John Rhodes. I need a motion. Unless people have questions or comments first.
I saw move. Marty.
Do we make a motion to, to send the letters, that the board send the letters as written that are attached to the committee report?
That's my motion, yes.
Okay, I'll second it.
Okay, a motion has been made by Marty and seconded by Trina to send the letter. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Gina Argento?
Yes.
Bogdan Bakarowski?
Yes.
Lisa Bomonte?
Yes.
Gina Barrows? Keon Brooks?
Yes.
Eric Berzides? Eric Berzides? No vote. Tom Burrows?
Yes.
Iris Cabrera? Phil Capone Negro?
Yes.
Frank Carbone?
Yes.
Stephen Chasler?
Yes.
Michael Chiracella? Teresa Cinciatto? Giovanni Damato?
Yes.
Erin Drinkwater? Erin Drinkwater? No vote. Yes? Arthur Dibinowski?
Yes.
T. Willis Elkins?
Yes.
Julia Amanda Foster?
Um, yes, this system sucks.
Joel Goldstein, that's not on the motion, thank you. Joel Goldstein. Joel Gross. Sonia Iglesias.
Yes.
Bozina Kaminsky?
Yes.
Moisha Indig? Avram Katz? Avram Katz? William Claggs Bald? William Claggs Bald?
Yes.
Ryan Coonan?
Yes.
Yo Landau? Marie Lianza?
Yes.
Abraham Liebavitz? Abraham Liebavitz? No vote. Yo Lo? Yo Lo? Trina McKeeva?
Yes.
Sante Macheli?
Yes.
Toby Moskowitz?
Yes.
Simon, if you're not voting, w- w- you know, you're breaking up the whole roll call vote, which annoys. Martin Needleman? Martin Needleman?
Yes.
Rabbi Needleman? Karen Nieves?
Yes.
Mary Adamer?
Yes.
Janice Peterson?
Yes.
Dana Racklin?
Yes.
Isaac Soffer? Isaac Soffer? Rob Solano? Rob Solano?
Yes, yes.
James Stewart? Dell Teague?
Yes.
Tommy Torres?
Yes.
William Vega?
Yes, yes.
Excuse me. Maria Viera?
Yes.
Steven Weidberg? Steven Weidberg?
Yes.
Simon Weiser?
Yes.
Joel Gross is it?
Maria, I don't know if you hear me, I voted aye.
Got you now. Thirty-six yes, zero no, zero abstentions. Motion carries.
That's great. Uh, one more item, uh, Madam Chair. Um, and during old business, we followed up on thirty-four Berry Street, Brownfield cleanup that we um, that we met about last month and had a hearing about, and just, that was the building that already is filled with almost a hundred apartments and occupied by residents that has um contamination remediation going on. And we uh, uh, you know, first thing is that the comment here has, on the proposed remedy has been extended to.
I'm sorry, that's me, I'm sorry.
Has been extended to November seventh, so I'm gonna put a uh, a link in the, in the chat if people wanted to submit a comment. But also, um, we, we voted to unanimously to recommend that the board uh write a letter to the, the State Department of Health requesting a health study be done, it impacts with the contamination and the pros cleanup on the residents of thirty-four Berry Street. So a, uh, you know, motion on, uh, on that as well.
I saw move.
Motion.
Who's that, Marty and Iris?
Dell.
Dell, sorry.
Yes.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded.
Marty, yes.
Can we have a roll call vote? Somebody's on their phone, would you please mute yourself?
I just have a question. If, if it appears that everybody is going to approve this, is it possible to just see if there, if anyone objects? Rather than having a roll call?
We don't, we don't have the proper communication to do that, Dell. We came here, people, there's so much noise. So let's just do a roll call and get it right.
Okay.
We did do it earlier, this is a note.
Gina Argento?
Yes.
Bogdan Bakarowski?
Yes.
Lisa Bomonte?
Yes.
Gina Barrows?
Yes.
Keon Brooks?
Yes.
Eric Berzides?
Yes.
Tom Burrows?
Yes.
Iris Cabrera?
Yes.
Phil Capone Negro?
Yes.
Frank Carbone?
Yes.
Stephen Chasler?
Yes.
Michael Chiracella? Teresa Cinciatto? Giovanni Damato?
Yes.
Erin Drinkwater? Erin Drinkwater?
Yes.
Arthur Dibinowski?
Yes.
T. Willis Elkins?
Where'd he go?
Julia Amanda Foster?
Yeah.
Joel Goldstein? Joel Gross?
Yes.
Sonia Iglesias?
Yes.
Bozina Kaminsky?
Yes.
Moisha Indig? Avram Katz? William Claggs Bald?
Yes.
Yes.
Ryan Coonan?
No.
Yo Landau? Marie Lianza? Abraham Liebavitz? Yo Lo? Trina McKeeva?
Yes.
Sante Macheli? Sante Macheli? Toby Moskowitz?
Yes. Sorry, yes.
Toby Moskowitz?
Yeah, yes, yes.
Needleman?
Yes.
Rabbi Needleman? Nieves?
Yes.
Mary Adamer?
Yes.
Janice Peterson?
Yes.
Dana Racklin?
Yes.
Isaac Soffer? Rob Solano?
Yes.
James Stewart? Dell Teague?
Yes.
Tommy Torres?
Yes.
William Vega?
Yes.
Maria Viera?
Yes.
Steven Weidberg? Simon Weiser? Simon Weiser?
Yeah.
Jerry, did you hear mine when I said yes, Marie?
No, but I got you now. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. Thirty-five yes, one no, zero abstention, motion carries.
That's great, thank you, everyone. That's uh, that's a wrap on environmental protection.
Thank you so much, Steve. Okay, um, next item, next report, Eric Berzides Transportation?
Thank you, hello, everyone. Um, I'm having some connection issues, so I'll try to make this fast. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Um, okay, so, uh, we had a meeting on the seventeenth of September. Um, we had one uh main item, uh, which was the temporary uh closure of Monitor Street between Greenpoint Avenue and um Norman Avenue. This is for Broadway stages to um install some extra um staging for uh their catering, craft services, um, talent holding, uh, and most importantly, uh COVID testing, uh, because of the strict uh union rules uh for production unions, um, they're required to do testing um multiple times a week. Uh, and um, they just don't have the capacity to do that um anywhere else on the facility. Also, Monitor Street, uh, those of you who are familiar with it, uh, know that uh the production trailers need to use that um, that corridor on a regular basis. You have a crew that's uh moving back and forth, and it's just creating a dangerous situation. So they've asked for a temporary um, temporary closure of Monitor Street. Um, we uh, we received a number, well, they have received, which was forwarded, uh, a number of um approvals from um. approvals from, um, the elected off, uh, elected offices. Captain Fahey from the nine-four joined the meeting to discuss, uh, safety issues at the location. Um, she seemed to feel that it would be, uh, it would work. Um, uh, and, uh, she's also noting that there have been a couple of, uh, impromptu car raves on that block, um, during the shutdown and, uh, she was hopeful that this would also, um, stop some of that, some of that practice. Uh, but the main thing is really to get, um, additional staging in there for COVID testing. For a couple of, uh, concerns about rerouted traffic, um, the captain said that initially, uh, she didn't, see it as a key issue. Obviously DOT is gonna have to come in and, uh, do, uh, one more analysis before they can finally do it, but, you know, they've been trying to get this done for a few months now. Um, uh, as everybody knows, all businesses are being hit hard by COVID. Production, um, is especially taking it hard. Um, and this would help them get back up and, up and running in a normal business. So we had a vote. Uh, and the, the, the motion was to approve the request as stated by Broadway Stages to close the section of Monitor Street from Greenpoint Avenue to allow for additional staging. And that was, um, approved, um, unanimously with one recusal. And, uh, the motion passed. And just to say that we had a quorum for the meeting. Um, so I need a, a vote on, um, on this item.
Need a motion?
Yes, please.
Phil Caponegro.
I've taken that, Iris Cabrera.
Who made the motion?
Phil Caponegro.
Okay, motion made by, uh, Phil and second by Iris. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Gina Argento.
Abstention.
Bogdan Bakarowski. No vote. Lisa Biamonte.
Yes.
Gina Barrows.
Yes.
Tion Brooks. Tion Brooks. I can't hear.
I was on mute, I'm sorry. Paul was on mute. Yes.
Tion Brooks.
Abstain.
Eric Brusitis.
Yes, can I just make a, a thing if you're
Yes.
Yes.
Phil Caponegro.
Yes.
Frank Carbone.
Yes.
Stephen Chesler.
Yes.
Michael Chiracella. Teresa Cinciatto. Giovanni Damato.
Yes.
Erin Drinkwater.
Yes.
Arthur Dibinowski.
Yes.
T. Willis Alkins.
Yes.
Julia Amanda Foster.
Yes.
Joel Goldstein. Joel Gross.
Yes.
Joel Gross.
Yes.
Sonia Iglesias.
Yes.
Bosina Kaminsky.
Yes.
Moisha Indig. Avram Katz. William Claggs bald.
Yes.
Ryan Coonan.
Abstain.
Yo Landau. Marie Lianza.
Yes.
Abraham Liebavitz. Yo Low. Trina McKeva.
Yes.
Sante Michelley.
Yes.
Toby Moskowitz. No vote. Martin Needleman. Martin Needleman.
Yes.
Rabbi Needleman.
Yes.
Rabbi Needleman. No vote. Karen Nieves.
Yes.
Mario Dahmer.
Yes.
Janice Peterson.
Yes.
Dana Racklin. Dana Racklin. No vote. Isaac Sulfer. Rob Solano.
Yes, yes.
James Stewart. Del Teague.
Yes.
Tommy Torres.
Yes.
William Vega.
Yes.
Maria Viera.
Yes.
Maria Viera.
Yes.
Steven Weidberg. Steven Weidberg.
Yes.
Simon Weiser. Simon Weiser.
Yes. Yes.
Well, speak up. I mean, you, you make it all noise the whole meeting and then you don't speak up. One, two, three, four, five, six.
Bogdan was on, on mute.
Nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, hundred.
I'm sorry, Jerry, I was on mute. Answer is yes.
Thirty-one yes, zero no, three abstentions, motion carries.
Thank you, Jared.
Okay, thank you.
Conclude the report, Eric?
No, I have one other item, uh, with two, uh, motions on it. So, um, most of you know that, uh, last month, um, I believe it was September sixth, um, we lost another resident, Sarah Pitts, uh, who worked for the Brooklyn DA's office, was, uh, killed on her bicycle by a charter bus, um, on Wythe, uh, and Williamsburg Street East, that intersection. Um, those of you that have been paying particular attention to transportation know that, uh, we've had had a number of, uh, meetings regarding area for the, um, for the exit and just fixing the general traffic problems at this location. Um, this death just serves to show that, you know, there really are some serious safety issues for both pedestrians and cyclists as well as motorists at this location. Um, uh, just want to mention Mr. Peter Roth, who was a close friend of Ms. Pitts, um, asked to speak at the meeting. He was very eloquent and gave us a, uh, a rundown on her life and how much she's done for the city and, um, and just what a shame, what a big loss it is. And, uh, you know, he also made a strong push for us to do something about the safety, um, for everyone, but especially mo, uh, pedestrians and cyclists at this location. So, you know, I'm, I'm kind of putting this in a nutshell, but I, you know, I don't want to underemphasize that, you know, we've had quite a number of cyclist deaths, uh, just in the last two years. And as cyclists increase, we really need to be more conscious of, uh, you know, what's going on in terms of how everyone is using the streets. So in light of that, um, and I want to just say that Ryan Coonan and Karen Nieves were especially vocal in their call for safety measures, um, at this location, um, as well as Erin Drinkwater. So we have two motions, both made by, um, Karen. Um, so we, back to, we're, just to say, we're back to the drawing board on the exit and what's gonna happen there with DOT, but in the meantime, uh, the first motion was that, um, the Community Board One should send a letter to New York City DOT, um, requesting an expedited pedestrian and bicycle safety study to be conducted at the intersections of Williamsburg Street West and East at Wythe and Kent Avenues and their adjacent streets. Um, and that was seconded by Ryan and, um, it was, uh, Pat, the motion was passed with no, uh, no objections or abstentions. So we need a vote on that to send that letter.
Motion.
I saw move, Marty Needleman.
Uh, who made the, who made the motion? And Marty second, who, who made the motion?
Maria.
Maria. Roll call vote, please.
Gina Argento.
Approved.
Bogdan Bakarowski.
Yes.
Lisa Biamonte.
Yes.
Gina Barrows.
Yes.
Tion Brooks.
Yes. Yes.
Eric Brusitis.
Yes.
Tom Burrows.
Yes.
Iris Cabrera.
Yes.
Phil Caponegro.
Yes.
Frank Carbone.
Yes.
Stephen Chesler.
Yes.
Michael Chiracella. Teresa Cinciatto. Giovanni Damato.
Yes.
Erin Drinkwater.
Yes.
Arthur Dibinowski.
Yes.
T. Willis Alkins.
Yes.
Julia Amanda Foster. No vote. Joel Goldstein. Joel Gross.
Yes.
Sonia Iglesias.
Yes.
Bosina Kaminsky.
Yes.
Moisha Indig.
Yes.
Avram Katz. William Claggs bald.
Yes.
Ryan Coonan. No vote. Yo Landau.
Yes, yes, yes.
Marie Lianza.
Yes.
Abraham Liebavitz. Yo Low. Trina McKeva.
Yes.
Sante Michelley.
Yes.
Toby Moskowitz. No vote. Martin Needleman.
Yes.
Rabbi Needleman. Karen Nieves.
Yes.
Mario Dahmer.
Yes.
Janice Peterson.
Yes.
Dana Racklin.
Yes.
Isaac Sulfer. Rob Solano. James Stewart. Del Teague.
Yes.
Tommy Torres.
Yes.
William Vega.
Yes, yes.
Maria Viera.
Yes.
Steven Weidberg.
Yes.
Simon Weiser. No vote. Thirty-five yes, zero no, zero abstention, motion passes.
Thank you, Jared.
You, uh, the last, uh, the last motion also related to this issue, um, also made by Karen Nieves, is that, uh, Community Board One should send a letter to the New York Police Department Ninetieth Precinct to increase traffic enforcement at the intersections of Williamsburg Street West and East at Wythe and Kent Avenues and their adjacent streets. And to update the board on the status of community council meetings so that the public can follow up on the safety concerns at this lo, at these locations. That was, uh, seconded by Ryan and, uh, passing unanimously, no abstentions.
We need a motion and a second. I'll give the motion.
I saw move.
I second.
Okay, Marty and Dell, roll call vote, please.
Gina Argento.
Yes.
Bogdan Bakarowski.
Yes.
Lisa Biamonte.
Yes.
Gina Barrows.
Yes.
Tion Brooks.
Yes.
Eric Brusitis.
Yes.
Thomas Burrows.
Yes.
Iris Cabrera. Phil Caponegro.
Yes.
Frank Carbone.
Yes.
Stephen Chesler.
Yes.
Michael Chiracella. Teresa Cinciatto. Giovanni Damato.
Yes.
Erin Drinkwater. No vote. Arthur Dibinowski.
Yes.
Yes.
T. Willis Alkins.
Yes.
Julia Amanda Foster.
Yes.
Joel Goldstein. Joel Gross.
Yes.
Sonia Iglesias.
Yes.
Bosina Kaminsky. No vote. Moisha Indig.
Bosina, yes.
William Claggs bald.
Abstain.
Ryan Coonan.
Yes.
Yo Landau. Marie Lianza.
Yes.
Abraham Liebavitz. Yo Low. Trina McKeva.
Yes.
Sante Michelley. No vote. Toby Moskowitz.
Yes, sorry, was, uh, Coonan mute? Yes.
Toby Moskowitz. Martin Needleman.
Yes.
Rabbi Needleman. Karen Nieves. Mario Dahmer.
Yes.
Janice Peterson.
Yes.
Dana Racklin.
Yes.
Isaac Sulfer. Rob Solano.
Yes.
James Stewart. Del Teague.
Yes.
Tommy Torres.
Yes.
William Vega.
Yes, yes.
Maria Viera.
Yes.
Steven Weidberg.
Yes.
Simon Weiser.
Erin Drinkwater, yes.
Thirty-two yes. Zero no, one abstention.
Thanks, everyone. Uh, we'll, uh, I'll be in touch about the next transportation meeting in the next few weeks. Thank you.
Thank you, Jared. Thank you, Eric. Um, SLA.
Madam Chair, if I may, uh, Eric, before you go, you're still here, right?
Sir, yes.
Yeah, I sent out an email late this afternoon where DOT is just throwing it at us that they're gonna start renting spaces underneath the BQE.
Yes, I, I
It, it's pretty outrageous that DOT just does this without consulting us or talking with us or having any discussion. And, and every member should take a quick look at that, and I would hope your committee would address it at your earliest convenience. It's, it's pretty outrageous.
Uh, Will and, um, somebody else has reached out to me already to put that on the agenda and I was already, uh, gonna do it. I just need to sit with Marie tomorrow and get a date and also talk to Rhonda and find out what's really going on.
I mean, we, we, we may want to ask the commissioner to come to our next community board meeting, because this is not the first time that they just, they just decree what should be done for this community and without consultation.
I agree.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jared. Thank you, Eric. Uh, Tom Burrows. SLA, good deal.
The only thing I wanted to bring to the board today is there was an application that was done before our committee back in February of twenty nineteen. With full, they changed the method of operation and their, uh, capacity. And it, the committee voted to support their change. It came to the full board on March twelfth of twenty nineteen. Um, we voted in favor of it. Um, at the time, you may remember, there used to be things called cabaret licenses. There are no longer cabaret licenses, so they forgot to check a box on the form that said there'd be dancing. So the SLA is making them come back to us again to approve the same application, but they checked the right box for dancing. Um, Charlie Ryan is, I believe, on the meeting from Brooklyn Bowl, but, um, the recommendation is that we just send a letter to the, the, um, SLA that we approved this application last year. There are no changes in what the application was and that they should be allowed to go ahead with their alteration.
I make my motion to approve.
That motion, Rob Solano.
Second.
Okay, a motion has been made by Bogdan and second by Rob. Roll call vote, please.
Tom, could you just repeat the motion, please?
Um, Brooklyn Bowl, um, has a alteration of their license to, and to change their, their capacity. Um, and this is to reaffirm our support for their application that we approved in March of twenty nineteen. Um, and it, it's, they, they're back on their calendar again for the, the same exact thing. Uh, Mr. Ryan is there, if they could let him, there's a, they just, there's a letter of, um, Marie knows the wording. It's some kind of a letter we have to sign.
That is to allow for patron dancing, correct?
Yes. It's acknowledging that we knew about it.
All right, whenever you want, Madam Chair.
Yes, roll call vote, please.
Gina Argento. Bogdan Bakarowski.
Yes.
Lisa Biamonte. Gina Barrows.
Yes.
Tion Brooks.
Yes.
Eric Brusitis.
Yes.
Tom Burrows.
Yes.
Iris Cabrera.
Yes.
Phil Caponegro.
Yes.
Frank Carbone.
Yes, yes.
Stephen Chesler. Michael Chiracella. Teresa Cinciatto. Giovanni Damato.
Yes.
Erin Drinkwater.
Yes.
Arthur Dubinowski.
Yes.
T. Willis Elkins.
Yes.
Julia Amanda Foster.
Yes.
Joe Goldstein. Joe Gross. Sonia Iglesias.
Yes.
Bozina Kaminski.
Yes.
Moisha Indig. Avram Katz. William Klaxbold.
Yes.
Ryan Coonan.
Yes.
Yo Landau. Marie Lianza.
Yes.
Abraham Liebovitz. Yo Low. Trina McKeva.
Yes.
Sante Michelley.
Yes.
Toby Moskowitz. Martin Needleman. Rabbi Needleman. Aaron Yevaz.
Yes.
Mario Dahmerk.
Yes.
Janice Peterson.
Yes.
Dana Rackland.
Yes.
Isaac Soffer. Rob Solano.
Yes.
James Stewart. Del Teague.
Yes.
Tommy Torres.
Yes.
William Vega.
Yes.
Maria Viera. Stephen Whiteberg. Simon Weiser. Thirty-one yes, zero no, zero abstention. Motion carries.
Thank you, Jared. Does that conclude your report, Tom?
Uh, yes, we, um, just so everybody knows, um, during this pause, we're not getting any guidance from the SLA, so, and no one's clamoring. So, um, we're gonna try and have another meeting at the end of this month to try and figure out what it is we're supposed to be doing.
Thank you, Tom. Um, next item on the agenda is parks as written. Next item on the agenda is the public session. Do we know if the senators are here, salars are, and Kavanaugh?
Sorry, Madam Chair, can we ask a question about the parks?
Pardon me?
Can we ask a question about the parks report?
What report?
The parks, the parks report as written.
Uh, is Mary to answer a question?
If Mary is available to answer a question.
But Phil is there.
Okay, the question.
To the Parks Committee.
It's about the parks report for Mary.
Does anybody know if Mary is here? Is anybody from the Parks Department? It sound, doesn't sound like anybody's here. Who, who wants to ask the question?
Well, th- this is Willis. I just, the, the issue is about the McCarran Field House. And the parks has already started construction. They've set up this temporary building that's in the park and, and the comments that were, or in the notes that were submitted, that they're on course to do this Field House project, but I'm not clear if Community Board ever approved that project. I know there was a lot of outstanding concerns about structural structures in the park, um, and, and other issues as well. So, I'm looking to see.
I believe we voted against it.
Okay, Alice, uh, put your question and box it and forward it to the board and we'll get it to the proper person. Because there's no one here to answer the question.
Mary is.
This is. Mary is here, if you can hear me.
Oh, okay, Mary is here.
Yep.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, so, um, we did.
Would somebody please mute their mic? Or hang up their phone? Thank you. Okay, Mary.
Yeah, so the last correspondence we had was back and forth with, uh, the members of the Parks Committee. We had a few outstanding questions that I believe that we answered. Uh, if there are more outstanding questions, I'm happy to answer them, or Willis, if you want to discuss this more in depth tomorrow, I'm also happy to get in a call with you.
I have a question about that as well, because I thought Phil said that we didn't approve the Park House, so we're not gonna approve the liquor license.
Does anybody have an answer for Tom? Mary, Phil?
Hi, uh, this is, it's, it's Phil now. Tom's right. I mean, we, we didn't approve the, their plan, but we did make a list of concerns. They were, they were addressing those concerns, but they were supposed to come back to us before they moved forward.
Okay, so, Phil, did you get the letter that I sent, um, that had a list of the concerns and how they were, uh, mediated by the concession team? Because if not, I'll resend that.
You could, but they still should have came back to the committee, even, you know, and let us know. I mean, just to say they're putting in a few extra bathrooms, whatever. They should have backed to us and, and got a full, you know, a full acceptance before they moved ahead with this.
Okay, I will talk to the concession team tomorrow, uh, and provide you with an update.
Okay.
Thank you, Mary. Is there any other questions for Mary? Okay, thank you so much, Mary.
Yeah, no, no problem.
Okay, um, public session, do we know if the senators are here? Kavanaugh and Salazar? Apparently not. Okay, uh, Jerry, can we, uh, call the names of the people that signed up to speak in the public session? Thank you.
Sharon Pope Marshall. She's not present. Charlie Ryan. Let me get him.
He was only asked to be on the call if there's any questions, so I don't know if he wants to, I don't, it's not necessary for him to speak unless he wants to.
I don't see him now.
I think Charlie's good. We took care of his questions.
Okay. Next person is Lucy Walton. Lucy?
Need to be unmuted.
Yeah, you.
I'm unmuted now. Thank you for unmuting me. So, um, we just wanted to know, um, the status of the River Street rezoning request and if two trees have mat with the boards since the last public meetings. Um, and we'd also just like to understand what impact COVID is having on this rezoning request, given the increased density of the development and, um, the increased, um, focus on, you know, a lot of rental units being left empty in the area, a lot of, uh, reduced demand for these rental properties in our, in our, as it's called.
Thank you, Lucy. Next person is Christina Rochakis. Where are you, Christina? Christina?
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful, thanks. Good evening. My name's Christina Rochakis, and I'm serving as the Regional Commissioner of the Greenpoint Williamsburg Youth Soccer League. Uh, we're a nonprofit, all-volunteer youth soccer organization that serves nearly 1,000 Brooklyn kids and families every year. Our league's, our league's motto is "Everybody Plays." We're proud of the fact that we offer an inexpensive option for a great soccer experience, and we offer financial aid for any family that can't afford the fee. Our community is very concerned right now about the condition of the turf playing field at Bushwick Inlet Park, which has been increasingly deteriorating over the past couple of years. Uh, I actually included a photo on my speaking notes that I emailed in. Since we have so little active park space in North Brooklyn, the field is in constant use by the community, and it shows. We understand that New York City's financial situation is difficult right now. However, this turf replacement is much needed and far overdue. The COVID-19 challenge we're all facing is served to underscore how critical our parks of open spaces are to the fabric, health, and well-being of our children and the city at large. Along with a growing coalition of community partners, we've organized an online petition asking the city to release the funding for a turf replacement as soon as possible so that the work can be scheduled this winter when the field is least in use. We respectfully ask that the Community Board One support this petition, which has received overwhelming community response in just a few days. As of tonight, we had over 800 people sign. So, thank you for your time and your consideration of this matter.
The next speaker, please. Marie?
Yes, Paul Wilson. Paul Wilson, you have to unmute yourself.
Ms. Wilson? Yeah, hi, I'm sorry about that. I was having a hard time unmuting. Um, I'm the president of the Greenpoint Spark Youth Football Organization. Local nonprofit, all-volunteer organization to do sports, as many of you know. Um, and I wanted to echo the Guistle Commissioner's comments about the turf field at Bushwick Inlet. If we can try to fast-track that in some way. As you know, we don't have, um, really, we have the, the least amount of open space of any neighborhood, uh, in the five boroughs, and particularly a crisis is athletic playing field, um, space and time and permits. But the field there is, uh, deteriorated so badly that our league won't even sanction games there. So, we can practice on the field, using parts of it and working around the problems. But we really, um, we really need to have that addressed, you know, mainly because there's so little space, and, uh, because of that, those fields are permitted from like eight in the morning until 11 at night on the weekends, at 10 o'clock at night at Bushwick. So, we'd like, uh, Community Board support to, uh, try to push council to release those funds. I think that it's been approved. Um, so maybe a letter, uh, possibly in support of, um, you know, releasing those funds and fast-tracking that, a project. Thank you for your time.
I believe everyone has spoken. That's present.
Thank you, Marie. Okay. I would imagine that the senators are not here. Are there any electors signed up to speak? Other than the senators?
Mrs. Serna is in the, um, he had his hand raised.
Who?
Mr. Serna from the mayor's office.
Okay. Edward Serna.
Uh, hello, everyone. Uh, Edward Serna here, representing the mayor's office of Community Affairs. Um, I just wanted to talk about two things in an ultimate long meeting. The first is the census, uh, I believe like shortly before this, uh, meeting started or after, um, the pre-court ruled that, um, the administration can and the census count early. And so it's really imperative that, um, it, you know, everyone do like a last, final push to get everyone counted. You know, this board has had many of presentations and, including myself, speak on this issue. Uh, the census is gonna impact federal funds for the next 10 years, our representation in Congress, so, um, we're really like at the, the, the last moment here, um, but from what we can tell so far, right? Um, so we encourage everyone that if you haven't filled out the census, fill it out and encourage everyone around you to do so as well. Um, secondly, um, as we know, uh, Brooklyn has had, and Queens, uh, has had, uh, a spike in, um, you know, the COVID situation. Um, the governor instituted these, uh, zones, um, luckily, or not luckily, but rather, Williamsburg was not part of it. Um, but the city has been doing a lot of work in Williamsburg. We've been doing, uh, mask distributions out of the Williamsburg library. Um, and so, uh, you know, if the situation continues as it has, we could possibly see, you know, expansion of the zones, but we really want to avoid that. So, it's imperative that folks continue to practice the code for washing your hands, wearing a face mask, maintain social distancing and staying home if you have symptoms, and also to go get tested. And so, um, they did ask me to spread, uh, about the testing piece, spread about how, um, with schools now, uh, partially, um, remote and for some in, in class learning, um, testing took place in 56 schools so far. Uh, o- over 1,700 adults and students have currently been tested and only one tested positive, so that's like one out of almost 2,000. Also, we really want folks, if they have children that are going to school, to fill out the, the, uh, the waiver, or not the waiver, but the permission, granting the city permission to test kids, so that way, um, you know, they can get tested and we keep, you know, the situation in schools, um, safe as possible as well and increase the, the fo- the pool of folks being tested. Um, so I'm going to be sending the link to where you can find some of, uh, that information. Um, uh, and, one second here. Um, okay. And then also, again, just to be observant of what we said, uh, there was enforcement over the weekend of large gatherings, over 150,000, uh, dollars worth of fines were handed out. Um, so again, if you, if you want to, w- again, Williamsburg is not in another cluster zone, but I would encourage folks to go check it out in case you're traveling in Brooklyn. Um, and again, just stay safe, uh, and if you have any questions, uh, feel free to direct them my way. Thank you.
My question. Um, uh, two things. One is, because it's also on policing. It is appearing to a huge amount of people that the police are not being very energetic at this point, and certainly in ways that men, women are complaining, "Police don't come." I can name blocks, I'm not gonna get into that at this time of the night, but the, the 9094, I mean, one is we need to really know what's going on, because you can hardly see very invisible our police, and we've always had a good relationship with the police departments, and now people are very unhappy. And the next question is, are the senior centers, when are they opening? Seniors, as you know, are, have been a lot, quite lonely and locked often in their apartments. People died in public housing, you know, and if things are opening up, and certainly, if things are opening up, I think older people might want to be able to, with safe rules, opening up the senior centers. I mean, Bozina, you can comment on that too, but I'm concerned that, uh, that there isn't a real opening, and we know that the city's gonna be making priorities about how to respond to the coronavirus and all the money is lost. So, I guess the question is, is that, uh, the, the budget, I'm assuming that the budget coming from this board and everybody else, what their priority, priorities are, is mattering. We'll be able to do everything.
Yeah, for sure, I hear you on all of that. I don't have a response. I would have to take this back to the office and circle back, um, but, you know, the mayor has always said that the, the funding priorities right now is like meeting the needs of, of New Yorkers, whether that be providing testing, uh, food, um, and, and food programs, uh, do assist seniors who are not able to travel outside of their home. And again, um, you know, there is some programming that DIFDA is doing online. Of course, it's never gonna replace the, the human.
It stopped at the end of September, by the way, and I've just talked to several public housing sites. They're not getting the food now. It stopped, uh, at the end of September. Um, that's a concern. You know, what is fully the distribution plan for food? How are seniors going to be able to get out more? And violence against women has been big at home and on the street. So, I think we need a kind of an accounting from our local.
Okay, yeah, uh, maybe we can have, follow, uh, continue this offline, but yeah, I'll, I can follow up on those two items.
Hi, I want to talk about the food program which Jan was speaking on. Um, I'm also a senior. Hi, me. We are still receiving food, but I just want you to know, the food is horrible. It spoils within 24 hours. We get bagels on a constant delivery, which the next day they're molded. We have apples every delivery. I'm quite sure we have more than another fruit than apple in New York. I have an orchard in my refrigerator. My grandson's other grandmother has an orchid on her table, and all my friends that I do speak to say they're sick of apples. I don't know who the vendor is that's delivering to Cooper Park or Williamsburg Houses, but there needs to be some kind of change because the food is horrible. It's, it's molding, it's, it's bad, it stinks. And I tell them a lot. It's molding, it's, it's bad, it stinks, and I tell them a lot of times to take it back. I mean, I have two sons that could go to the store for me and get food, but other folks may not have that opportunity. If you could take that back to the mayor and let him know the vendor he's using is horrible, just horrible.
Let's just say it's cut-off stuff. She's right. There's some food going and some private sector people have jumped in and some other public housing sites aren't getting, so it's uneven. And they should just do a review of that program because, yeah. But people have to get out, so seniors have to, whether we have parks that only have seniors in it for certain hours a day, like Cooper Park, next to Cooper Park houses, there has to be a way that people can get out and stretch and move around.
And please do bring up the senior centers. I have a lot of seniors that even though it's cold outside, they're sitting on the bench because as Jan was stating, they want to get out. They cannot go to the center that's around the corner. They can't wait to play their two or five minutes of bingo to sit and chit-chat with one another. They're not computer savvy. They don't, they don't even want to learn how to work a computer, nevertheless the smartphone. So if you can bring that to the mayor to figure out how you can open up these little centers, especially the small ones, where there's only maybe 10 or 20 people attending, they, they want to go. I mean, I go sometimes walking and they're sitting on a bench just to communicate with each other.
That's right.
And it's cold outside.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jan.
Thank you, my sweetie.
Thank you for that. I really appreciate it, and I will be, we'll be taking that back.
Okay, thank you, Edward. Make sure that the mayor put the seniors on the table to talk about doing something for the seniors.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's true. They need to come back to the Community Board and be available.
Is there any other electors? Marie? Marie, is there?
No one has signed up to speak.
Okay, thank you so much. Is there any new business or old, any old business?
Yes.
New business?
Well, we go to old business first.
Well, my old business is that, one is, is that the Greck Plan is moving ahead after some concern with the cuts and all of that, what that was going to do, but it's moving ahead. And you'll get a briefing soon, but the, the awards, because we're still talking about giving recognition to the people that have really done an amazing job, like Amanda that was just talking, Julia, and helping out during the coronavirus. I was waiting for some emails and addresses, so we are planning in the November meeting to finalize the list and get some plaques and recognition for the incredible work that a lot of people have done in this community. From the legislation, yeah.
Yeah.
I have an old business. What's going on with the bylaw? What's happened to the bylaw discussion?
Committee is still in committee. Any other old business?
Are we having elections anytime soon?
It's still in committee.
I would just say the committee's received amendments to amend the bylaws again and for a specific timing of nominations and elections, so just have to get it done.
Okay. Is there any new business? I'd like to say I regret not calling out our former mayor's, Mayor Dinkins, who lost his wife Joyce this week. And I'd like to offer our condolences to former Mayor Dinkins and his family. I'm sorry I didn't bring it up in the moment of silence.
Here, here.
Thank you. You have something else, Chesler?
Yeah, just a suggestion, essentially assigning someone to monitor the chat in the Q and A panel, just so those can be flagged and brought up in a timely manner. I was sort of covering, but it's just hard to concentrate on the meeting and do that, and I think it'd just be better if someone designated overlooked that, you know.
Thank you so much. I was trying to do it myself, monitor both. We do have somebody to monitor, but they were not available tonight.
I have another suggestion for, for new business. Could we follow up on what, what's been said about the Bushwick Inlet Park soccer field? And state and could, could the board possibly write a letter asking whether the, the field could get restored as quickly as possible? Just follow up on what was brought up tonight and knowing that there is a petition out with over 800 signatures.
Sure, I think, good point, Trina.
Okay, we, we have to take a vote on it. I don't know if we still have a quorum.
I make a motion that, except we send a letter on behalf of the repave, is it called repaving? The.
Resurface.
The Bushwick Inlet Park with whatever it's called. I know it's a soccer field, but I don't know what that paving is called. The, the fake, the fake grass. We want it.
Turf.
Okay.
Okay, can we get a second on motion to send a ladder to resurface the soccer ball field?
Second.
We have two seconds. Who was it? Who?
There's Steve Chesler.
Bemonte.
Steve? Okay, motion was then made by Jan, seconded by Steve to send a ladder to the city to resurface the soccer ball field in the Bushwick Inlet Park, I think.
Yes.
Can we have a roll call vote, Jerry? I don't know if we still have a quorum. Anybody that's not speaking, could you please mute yourself?
Gina Argento.
Yes.
Arndam Bakarowski.
Yes.
Lisa Bemonte.
Yes.
Gina Barrows.
Yes.
Tion Brooks.
Yes.
Tion Brooks?
Yes.
Eric Brusitis.
Yes.
Tom Burrows.
Yes.
Iris Cabrera.
Yes.
Phil Capone Negro.
Yes.
Ryan Carbone.
Yes.
Stephen Chesler.
Yes.
Michael Chiracella, Teresa Cinciatto, Giovanni Di Mato. Aaron Drinkwater. Arthur Dibinowski.
Yes.
T. Willis Alkins.
Yes.
Julia Amanda Foster. Joe Goldstein. Joe Gross.
Yes.
Sonia Iglesias.
Yes.
Ozina Kaminski.
Yes.
Voisha Indig. Avram Katz. William Clagvol. Ryan Coonan.
Yes.
Yo Landau. Marie Lianza.
Yes.
Abraham Libovitz. Yo Low. Gina McKeva.
Yes.
Sante Macheli.
Yes.
Bobby Moskowitz.
Bobby Moskowitz.
Martin Needleman.
Yes.
Rabbi Needleman. Karen Yevaz.
Yes.
Mary O'Dommer.
Yes.
Dennis Peterson.
Yes.
Dana Racklin. Isaac Soffer. Rob Solano. James Stewart. Del Teague.
Yes.
Tommy Torres. William Vega.
Yes.
Maria Viera.
Yes.
Stephen Weidberg.
Yes.
Simon Weiser. 29 yes, motion passes.
Yay, yay, yay.
Careful, I have new business.
Yes, Karen.
The meters on Manhattan Avenue, there's like six of them that are not working. I don't know what the deal is, but they're not accepting credit cards nor coins. And then after you try like three times, it will say to download an app, but yet they're given tickets. So I was wondering if the board could find out. I, I know that they're going to be switching over to two-hour meeting parking soon. However, in the meantime, we need meters that are, are working because we can't walk two blocks to put coins in the meter or a credit card.
Happening in Brooklyn Heights.
On Metropolitan Avenue.
Thank you. Jerry, can we look into that tomorrow?
Karen, if you want to send me an email with the locations, I'll be happy to forward it to Keith Bray.
There's a message in the chat from Evelyn Cruz.
What?
There's a message in the chat from Evelyn Cruz, Nidia Velazquez's office. I have the glasses on, so it's really, really tiny if somebody wants to read it.
The funded resources that, that the Heroes Act could provide, the bill also has strong protections for tenants. Provide robust emergency rental assistance in addition to other life-saving provisions to prevent evictions and foreclosures, Evelyn. So that's an update on the Heroes Act pertaining to rentals. Thank you, Evelyn. Is there any, any other new business?
Yeah, one, one more thing. Sorry. I was just wondering, we haven't seen an executive committee report come through in a while, and the committee is taking votes on behalf of the board. So I was just wondering if that can resume again at some point.
The committee is taking votes on what?
Like in the, the committee is taking votes on behalf of the board, like the September meeting. There was a report that the city asked community boards to voluntarily cut their budgets, and the executive committee voted to reject that, which is fine, but it wasn't reported to the full board. And technically, the full board is supposed to notify that.
I don't think that's accurate, Steve. Your statement is not accurate. The board had an $8,700 cut that was mandated.
Swedish?
The executive committee was not annexed to, to make any additional funds. Came in from OMB was, would the board consider a voluntary layoff? And after consulting with legal counsel, I was advised that unless a man, unless that layoff is mandated to the board by the city, the city couldn't volun, that the board couldn't voluntarily offer up a staff member to lay off without getting sued like you would never met.
Like, okay, that's why I'm just, the point is, is that, that wasn't communicated to the board. It's really important, you know, that the executive committee is looking out for the, for the tree board. But that needs to be communicated to all of us and potentially voted on as well.
Is there any other questions? Any other comments?
I, yeah, I have a comment. I just wanted to mention a report to the whole board that I, we found out last week, the hotel on Broadway called Bee Hotel is being used by a nonprofit organization, I believe is break the ground as a temporary housing. And I feel that we should ask the mayor or send a letter to the mayor so we, the community board, get notified when they're going to allow any nonprofit or they're going to use any hotel as a temporary housing in our community because it's saying, I'm, I'm support housing for everyone. But it seems like if they do whatever they want, we just find out by walking from the hotel.
You're absolutely right. They do not consult us when they're getting ready to put somebody in the community.
So I guess then we.
Or even notify us.
Can we send a letter to the mayor so we can ask, at least to notify so that people know when they're going to use a hotel or any facility in the neighborhood? So people know and they be aware of any, any person that is no, I guess, from the community. So we especially women be safe when we walk on the street.
We may want to send it to Steve Banks, who's the head of HTR, who specifically deals with that, that who's maybe specifically more responsive.
Is Ms. Dragwater still on?
DHS.
Is Ms. Dragwater still on?
I am, yes. So I know that we had spoken to Councilmember Reynosa's office, I believe it was last week or the week prior. And these are beds that breaking ground open as part of their stabilization capacity to bring individuals off the street and particularly serving individuals from the neighborhood.
Thank you. Is there anything else? Nothing, nothing else? Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Rob Solano motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Meeting's adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Be safe, be healthy, and good to hear from everybody and see everybody.
Good night.
Bye.
Thank you.
Bye.